Eight weeks, is it?
Approximately and as the council chamber is uh is being renovated with state of the art equipment. So we're excited to be here and excited about things to come there. So this setup, just for my colleagues, this is the setup that we will use for our regular council meetings. If we have future study sessions, we may have a little more informal uh uh setup, but we wanted folks to kind of get used to the uh the council, regular council meeting setup. So if you have any suggestions for tweaking it, let our city administrator know or or Aaron. With that, we are here today to continue our discussion of our 2026, 2027 budget presentation. So Administrator Zelms, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Council President, Council members, Mayor Norton, members of mostly the staff of the organization and community. I'm just going to kick off with a little bit of a brief reminder of what we started with in the initial study session, as there might be people watching that weren't part of that. And for anyone that's presenting after me, you need to point the clicker this way. So little danceroo. So it's moved twice. So just starting off with this, we have adopted the new strategic priorities and adjusted foundational principles. And so when I'm thinking about the budget, first, those foundational principles, we do a lot of things at the city that are continuation. And then how we layer on top of that, the strategic priorities and balance the foundational principles becomes a little bit of dynamic tension when we're in the budget process, because there are things that we need to continue to do year after year, and then there are ways that we can layer on top of that. But of course, we also have this foundational principle fiscal responsibility and sustainability. And that's probably where most of the dynamic tension comes in when we're looking at the budget. Obviously, we've been working on this and the team here in the audience has been and and at tables have been working on this for quite a long time to bring you a two-year budget. And we are in this September phase of answering questions. And that's really what we're here to do today is to respond to some of more deeper questions that had come up on the first study session conversation. And so be thinking about if there's additional questions, we do have something scheduled for you at your next study session as well in order to be able to make good use of the time. So as a reminder, we're still sitting with this tax rate below 50% of our net tax capacity rate. That's been true for most of the last 10 years. There's a few years there in the 2018 to 2020 timeframe where we were bumping a little bit above the 50% net tax capacity rate level. But again, with some of the growth, both in valuation and new construction happening in the city, we are able to absorb some of these increases in cost and investment in community services through both the new construction growth and valuation adjustment. And that's the biggest way that someone's tax bill is going to change year over year is based on the proportionality of the value of their home or the value of their commercial retail business versus all of the rest of the properties that are in that category. And then the larger piece of all of the property that is within the city limits of Rochester. So just important to point out, as you can see, the increase in total levy year over year is just shy of $6.6 million. It's a pretty low number as as the tax levy goes year over year over the last few years. And the team worked really hard to keep that as low as possible, bringing it down from about 10.68% in your final levy that was projected at the end of 2024. We also have some rate adjustments in sewer, electric and water that we discussed. And as you can see, the total budget adds up to just about $664 million in 2026 and 630, about 636 million in 2027. There's some vacillations in the debt service in the capital improvement program when we're finishing a very large capital project and all of those expenses are hitting in one year. That can make some pretty large changes in the total budget overall. Operations, as you can see in the gray square to the left of that chart, does increase, but it decreases again when you get into that 2027 year. So some changes happening there across the entire book of business of the city of Rochester.
Council member Keen.
Just on that chart, I am interested like just in the operations box. It struck me that like that's the more stable part of the budget compared. But I noticed that we're doing like a nominal increase over 2025 into 26, but then we have a drop going into 27. Can you talk about that?
So a lot of that is related to how the debt service is showing up and the power purchase agreements are showing up in the Rochester Public Utilities Budget. So with all of the vacillation happening there, that's atypical to what you would normally see.
And that explains
talked to that more, but that's not something you see.
No, I didn't expect to see that.
Every 30 years or so, you see something like that. And so it's just a bit different than how we would normally carry some of those numbers.
Thank you. I understand it better now.
Sure. And you can see decision packages are a portion of that. We made some significant reductions in order to be able to bring that tax levy down almost in half. We are in our final year and absorbing the holistic budget stability funds that the council wisely put towards reducing what the tax levy would need to absorb as we were climbing back out of some of those pandemic changes. And then just being able to really stabilize our equipment revolving fund. We've been working on that for a few years and help get our budget in order and make sure that we have structural integrity to our operation and being able to provide services. And the levy-supported employee services costs, those are typically the lion's share of the increase of the levy. We do have contractual obligations to our labor units and a number of those are levy-funded positions. But not all of them. So you can see that the general fund is the largest supported fund with with the tax levy. That is where your 24/7 services of police, fire, and sometimes public works is the 24/7 service are located. Some administration, some of those typical departments that you see. But we also do have parks and recreation and the library receiving funds about $8 million, $8 to $10 million a year of our capital improvement program in the tax levy and then a tiny sliver there to fund the utilities and customs at the Rochester International Airport. The rest of those funds are paid for with airport-related revenue. And as you can see, what we're projecting out into the future years, and sometimes we're able to mitigate those as we were in this year, you're seeing on average about a seven and a half percent adjustment year over year. In the levy, a significant amount of that is regular personnel costs. We typically expect that to be about 5.5% adjustment year over year for personnel costs, which isn't just the actual salary. Those are things like salary, health insurance, those types of things. And of course, we're also absorbing some other impacts this year with paid family medical leave and things of that nature. And despite all of those things, the team did a great job of trying to bring this budget in lower than had been anticipated. So with that, I'm only going to be part of the talking heads this evening, this afternoon. And so I'm going to turn it over to Brian Anderson to talk a little bit about debt service.
Thank you, Administrator Zelms. Before, Brian, before you get started, and I was not here at the last study session. So I just want to say that, one, I want to commend you, Administrator Zelms, and your team on really the hard work that it took to get us to this 5.9% levy increase. Given a year ago, we were looking at 10%. I wasn't here, but the council was looking at that. So hard work by everybody across the board. And and going forward, from my perspective, I'm going to be looking at, one, you know, how are these budget packages aligned with our strategic priorities that we determined earlier this year? And also how we are effectively and efficiently delivering the the services that we deliver, which I understand is about 90-plus percent of the budget. It's continuing the services that we do. But I also will be looking at, you know, where are those strategic investments? Where are those places that we are planting the seeds for ensuring that the future growth of Rochester, the future thriving of our community across the board? So with that, I will let Brian, unless other council members have anything to say. Council member Keen, go ahead.
Yeah, just two small comments on slide nine. I just would suggest that when you're talking about the different impacts to the budget, that when they're negative, they could be marked as negative. I had a hard time following it, just just the chartmanship. And then I believe we have, we're going to do the CPI review or CIP review in the next meeting.
Council member Keen, we actually did the capital improvement plan review in June.
Okay, so there's and as far as these three budget meetings, we're not going to review that again.
It's up to the city council to ask us if you have specific questions about that.
So the plan was that we did the June review and that and that will just carry it as the number in this budget.
That's what we would be planning on unless we have additional discussion, questions about specific projects or requests for looking at something differently.
No, no, I think I'm okay. I just I wanted to bring it up because then I was looking at these three meetings and seeing what was covered. So that's helpful. Thank you.
Since Councilmember Keen asked that question, Ms. Zelms, could you just review what we will be hearing at our next session?
So that is a later slide, but we are planning to talk through. There was a question about the Equipment Revolving Fund and our vehicles. There was a question about how we're providing additional access and information into the public and working with partners about recreational programming. We also will have additional conversation from Rochester Public Utilities about some fee adjustments that they are looking at that didn't make it into the fee schedule that was reviewed in June. And we will also be talking with Public Music about making sure there's clarity around what their budget supports for. Yes, we still have fireworks in the budget. We still have everything in the budget, but they have concerns about providing a full-on Fourth Fest for what has been budgeted over the last five years.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Council President, Council, Mayor Norton, Administrator Zelms. So I have two slides to go over for the talk about the principal debt issuance. The first slide, as you can see, I pulled it from year end 2024, so you'll find that in the ACFOR. It's almost dollar for dollar. The one that I inflated simply because it will be there soon enough was the fourth line from the bottom, 72 million. And that's what was approved late last year for the water reclamation facility. And so the way that works is if you look in the ACFOR right now, I think it's like 9.8 or $9 million because you drop on that as you're using it as a project goes on. We'll get 72 million and that's what the amount was for. So worst case scenario, it's going to be 72 million. So I just put that in there right now. So you can see the amount of debt right there is $359 million, again, principal only as outlined. And you can see how that is going to taper off. I only did it out to 2036 simply because there's a lot of options in here, colables and things like that. So things can change. But I think you get the idea for now. And with that, too, it does not include any future debt. So if we do the regional sports and rec complex, it does not include that in there right now. Basically, what that would be, that would be a $65 million increase. We can have a future slide that shows that if you want. And that would be about a $3.5 million principal deduction on an annual basis. And with that, I'll go to the next slide.
If I could.
Councilmember Keen, go ahead.
Just one, line two here with the sales tax authorization from 2015. Again, it's maturity is this year, so that's good.
Yeah.
I was surprised by the size of the balance. It's still $10 million. I can't, I couldn't understand how it was still that high.
Yeah, and I'd have to go back and take a look at the history on that one, but I can give you feedback on that after. Yep.
It's not too serious, but it seemed to me that since it's last year, it should be a smaller balance.
Your Honor, just just on that one, you know, we have the funds available to pay the debt, but sometimes there's calling provisions, so you have to wait until, you know, the appropriate payment time is. But, you know, we have received the proceeds for that and we have the funds available to pay it.
Okay, so there's no, there's no problem with the way you, it's all understood. Okay, thank you.
And then so the second slide, too, is the same information that you see. This is the way you'll probably find it in the ACFOR, basically going down. The other one was by maturity date, and this one is simply by category. So you can see the general obligation bonds that are listed there. The second category is still a general obligation bond, but that is through the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority for the $72 million. So for the first group, 34% of the overall 359 or 360 million dollars worth of debt is 34%. For the second one, that's 72 million. That's an additional 20%. The revenue bonds, then, that's 39, represents 39%. And then the lease revenue bonds, 6%, and then the last one on there is 0.29%. So that gets you pretty close to 100. If you were doing the math, I just did some rounding in there. The ones that are highlighted, you can see those in the peach color, if you will, those are the ones paid through the EDA. And then the additional item that I would add is one thing that we get asked about would be the 2% limit that we are, all municipalities basically are up against. And what that is, is a net debt limit of 2% compared to the taxable market value. And so how that works is basically within the state law, they have deductions. So you you take out those that don't apply or that can be deducted from our 19 debt issuances or now 17 because two of them are coming off. So the ones that apply to that would be, and I don't have them highlighted here because I want to just make sure before the slide went out, I didn't get the information. But it's the, there's only six of them, the 2020C, the 2018A, the 2024A. Actually, I have it marked down as B, and I apologize for that. The, and then going down to the lease bonds, the 2007, the 2008, and then the 2020. So that is a total of $43 million, 43.5. So doing the simple math out here, basically, if you take our taxable market value, that is $18.9 billion. And if you take 2% of that, that brings us to $378 million. You subtract your 43 million from that, that leaves our capacity at $335 million that you can still borrow against, which is a lot of borrowing. And so basically, that's again, the 2% is $378 million. Where that 43 is, if you will, it's 0.23%. So it's it's less than a quarter of 1%. So you can see if you have 2%, then we're only at less than a quarter of 1% where our borrowing capacity is. So with that, our new, if we go through with the regional sports and recreational complex, that's going to be a geo sales tax revenue bond, and that will not go against that 2% debt limit either. And again, this was about the easiest graph I could put together to kind of show because some of the numbers get too small and they get lost and others get so large. So with that, too, just as another reminder, this was year end 2024, and the balances have already changed because we've already made two, our one principal interest payment on everything and two interest payments on everything as well. So but I just thought, do it that way, you could tie it back and you could see the correlation on how it's represented in the audit. So with that, I consent for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson, his point, Councilmember Keen?
I just want to, I, and when I look at this, it implies that it's all external loans like we took out and we go to the open market. Are any of these internal loans, like we have a enterprise fund borrowing from some other fund?
No, that is not recorded in here.
That's not recorded. These are the ones we go off when we go external.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if I made the only thing I would maybe add in looking at this chart is you're providing yourself future capacity to be able to stay at that very low amount of borrowing and still be a city 10, 20, 30, 50 years from now for the needs that are happening there. So a lot of great work over the last 25 years with borrowing for the city. And also, we've defused those when we can to make sure that you're paying less interest whenever that's that's an option. So just a quick overview in a slide that's difficult to read is the decision packages. We had an attachment as well to try to put those in priority order. As you can see, sometimes it's challenging to, if someone had 12 decision packages, if I had given them 12 opportunities to rank them number one, I guarantee you I would have had 12 number ones depending on the department. And some of them go together. So we do have additional information on some of these based on questions that were asked. So these are the 2026 recommended decision packages. There were more that were requested than were recommended. But again, trying to be judicious about that financial stewardship while still investing in new capacity to be able to deliver services to the community. This is what's being brought forward as recommended. I would just also add that I try to recommend what I think is reasonable and would be valuable to the community and to the questions and concerns we get throughout the year from community members, sometimes through our city council and mayor, and not inflate this into something that I, that it, that doesn't seem like a reasonable request. There still may be things that don't align with what you're looking for. But this was based on a lot of work from departments to try to really look at what are the calls for service they're getting? What are their capacity points where they have challenges? And true also in 2027, obviously, we have a little bit more pressure on 2027. Some of the reductions that were made are things that you can't do every year or you start impacting those service levels. That chart that we've looked at a few times that not everyone has wanted to talk about, where we did not reduce things from the budget that would have a measurable impact on someone in the community realizing that there's a difference in how we're providing services. Those seem to be policy decisions that the city council and mayor should be weighing in on and making. So these are the, what we were able to adjust, both in revenue and expenditure, to make sure that we got that levy down and we're still able to invest. Really was about things that are one-time opportunities that you don't get to do year over year, unfortunately, unless you're starting to affect those service levels and the experience that the community has.
Member Wall, thank you. Through the procedures that we'll go through in the next months, are we being asked to also approve the 2027 decision packages? Or we're suggesting that's what's going to come to us in a year's time?
Councilmember, Council President, I would say that if you have strong feelings about a 2027 decision package, it would be helpful to know that now. You are not approving the tax levy for 2027. That will, you will still have a supplemental budget process. But if there's something you have strong feelings about, concerns about, love it, don't love it, those would be helpful for the team to know so that they could be prepared for what that might mean for their operation going forward.
But it's still likely they'll come back as decision packages in 27?
They would most likely come back as recommended decision packages in 2027. With typically, we don't see many changes in a decision package level, but there could be something that that comes up that we weren't expecting in 2025.
Mayor Norton?
Thank you. And Councilmember Wall hit on one of the things I was curious about. You never know what a year will bring and that we're not going to be approving those this year yet. And we're still going to leave at least the idea open that if something comes up between now and then, we can reprioritize or and also look at receipts, I guess, as well to see if the amounts have changed. On this year's budget, I want, I wanted the building inspector, it has a negative of 71. So I was hoping you would address that. And I did want to say, you know, I know I'm not the only one, but I certainly do get calls about services that people are looking for. Some of these things are addressed in here and that's, and I particularly wanted to call out the the parks issue. We do have considerable calls about restrooms and our parks, and people really would like to see that improved. So I'm, and the arborist falls in there as well. Those are amenities, quality of life issues that this community feels strongly about and I hear about quite often, as well as the community service officers. So those are things that I get calls about that community is telling me they want, that I see in the decision packages that I wanted to just say, thank you for adding those. But I did want to ask about the building inspector because I thought we had approved one earlier this year. So I was.
Yep. So the building inspector that you're seeing right here is specific to making sure that we are going to be able to meet the requirements of the roofing, siding and window inspections that will now be required to have a permit. And so there is offsetting revenue to that. So that will go towards the cadre of building inspectors. And it's not just building inspectors that are part of that calculation. There's also teammates and staff that take intake calls, make sure the paperwork is working smoothly, all of those different things. And if you had any detailed, other detailed questions, I'm sure that Ms. Woodward could also answer them. That's one that ends up with revenue associated with it.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you. Just a quick question about the decision packages and prioritization. This was my request to see them in this way. Looking at the 2026, for example, I see three decision packages related to admin as a department, none in 27, and the three are prioritized 5, 9 and 10. Are there others that would have had 1, 2, 3, 4?
I believe some of the challenge there is that we broke out some of the departments, some of the department that used to be part of administration. But since I don't have my computer in front of me, I'm going to phone Brandon here in Parrish.
Yeah, Mayor, Council President, members of the council. Admin's a difficult one to do the prioritization on because we have, you know, subsets within that. You know, we have the project management team, we have the, you know, the general admin team, we have communications, we have DEI and so on. So, you know, I wouldn't put a lot of thought into the ordering there. I think some of them are things that you have to do and are important to advance. But we're ranking disparate areas. So I would just say it was a challenging one. I wouldn't put too much thought into that. You can compare what wasn't funded, and sometimes there's just some offsetting things that you had to consider and so.
Okay, sure. I appreciate the difficulty. I appreciate you putting this together. I just, again, I know it's come up of making sure that all the requests that are coming through were transparent and coming through to us. And so I understand some of the numbering, but this is a complete list of anything that came through as a decision package request.
That's correct. And I would maybe add a caveat to that, that we have a whole baseline adjustment process, which is how we reduced significantly the the overall levy request. And we also did that for non-levy departments and went through that exercise. So that looks at ongoing revenue, that looks at ongoing expense for that 90-plus percent of the budget. That's ongoing costs and maybe we change our mindset or how we do things. So there was a, there's always a significant review of the existing baseline budget as well. And so that was really where we were able to, maybe a way of looking at that is make some room to have additional investment without impacting the levy in such a drastic way as what we've seen in some other years. And depending on the person, they would argue something should be baseline, like maybe a reclassification of a position. But sometimes they add up when you have multiples of those. And so it's really the art and science of the council process and making sure you're seeing what you're resourcing. And I think
I've got a question on, and not specific on, we've got facilities vehicle and we have an unbound vehicle request at roughly 60,000 a pop. My question is more general on what is our strategy when it comes to our fleet? And and as far as the lifespan of vehicles and also just I want to put a pitch in there as far as, you know, transitioning to more environmentally sustainable EV vehicles. So kind of two questions in there.
Sure. Council President, I will start off by saying we are fortunate that we are about 90% of the way into a centralized fleet process, which only started about 18 months ago. So that's really helpful in being able to really look at the whole fleet. We had multiple different softwares, et cetera. We still have a couple of softwares that we are working to integrate, but we do have a strategy on
Can I interrupt just to say, does that include RP, RPD?
It includes, it includes Rochester Police Department. They also have entered into through the council process an agreement with Enterprise. The rental company also has the arm of their business that does leases for businesses. And so there's, we're, we've been working through that process with Enterprise. So we're not buying all of those vehicles. We have the ability to depreciate them if we need to. But the way that we've been redeploying the police fleet in a cost-effective way is utilizing that enterprise contract. So every piece of equipment isn't exactly the same. A heavy piece of equipment is likely going to be, you're looking at the hours that you've used it for, not the miles, because you don't drive it very far. But if you put 5,000 hours on a skid loader, that's a lot of hours, even though you drove five miles. I don't know how far they drive. It's not 1,000. And then if you are looking at a light duty or a medium duty vehicle, you're going to have a different lifespan for a public works vehicle. That's a light duty vehicle or a community development vehicle than you are for a police cruiser that's running 24/7 and, you know, all types of weather and potentially chasing someone if they need to do that, things of that nature. So there's a lot of variables to that. We also have surplus vehicles that we are working on addressing, helping people decide if they really need to keep a surplus vehicle. We do have, we do plan to deep dive that a little bit more on the 15th, but I don't know if Mr. Parrish has anything else to share.
Yeah, reemphasizing, the intent is to go deeper on this with regard to
At a future study session, is that what you're saying?
Or next, next study session, that's part of the budget ask and request. I would just say, you know, we have all kinds of things to consider with the EV component, whether we have the infrastructure at different locations to support charging. There's a cost differential and then can we, you know, do we have the capacity as a staff level to maintain them? You know, so those are all factors that we'll look at. But part of this is a resource issue. We have about twice the requests for equipment replacement than we have money to allocate. And so we do have that prioritization exercise. But, you know, we obviously do want to get to a point where we are able to consider investing in EV if they meet the needs, right? Like there are certain things. consider investing in EV if they meet the needs, right? Like there are certain things, you know, there's not a great, uh, EV plow right now. And so, you know, we're looking at, you know, the areas where we can make progress, um, and so on. So I, I think that's, that's keyed up for next meeting.
Well, I will look forward to that discussion.
And Mr. Parish will present that.
Great.
But with.
Mayor, Mayor Norton.
No, I would just say over the past, since I've been here, there have been studies done, um, evaluating our hopefully. So hopefully you'll have, I know they need to be updated, but you know, per, um, bring that forward too, if you can, a little bit about, um, what the, I think Kevin Bright, when he was here did one or had a, in a, work on one. So we've, we've done a little bit in the past, probably needs to be updated. But, but we have been working on this for a number of years and hopefully we'll see what the next meeting, what they have to share.
And, and I would just say like the city councils, since I've been here, have been good about trying to get on top of the equipment revolving fund. And so making sure that we're properly recent, resourcing the base where, where those are supposed to revolve is an important step to being able to look at what kinds of vehicles are we purchasing? Because when you haven't reserved enough for the vehicle that you need to replace, whatever kind of vehicle it is, it's challenging to, it, it starts challenging your levy if it's a levy funded expense. The only other thing I would point out, um, back to a prior question, and we can talk about this more on the 15th, is the facilities vehicle and the unbound vehicle, not like, I know we talk about the levy a lot, um, but it, those are not levy funded vehicles. So what would happen, for example, with the unbound vehicle is it would shuttle through the system of vehicles. And since unbound is not intended to be a forever resourced, um, entity, it would end up replacing an older vehicle within the system that otherwise would have maybe been a new purchase. And so we'll move back within the, the, the vehicle system when we are not in the space of having those, you know, five-year unbound positions anymore and be able to be a resource within the large fleet of vehicles that we have.
Thank you. Any further questions on this one? Moving on.
Good. You save them all for Karen. Um, so we did have, um, some questions about library services. And with that, I would welcome Karen Limkey, Director of the Library, to provide a much better overview than I did.
Thank you, uh, Council President Schubring, Mayor Norton, Members of Council, Administrators Elms. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk a little bit about, um, our ask and how it all really fits together and is really meant to be a strategic, long-term, um, vision, uh, that we can, um, come to fruition here. So, um, just to kind of explain, the library has been unique for a, a long time in having, um, really two types of part-time employees. Traditional, um, temporary, um, part-time, they work 13 and a half hours a week, or they work on a temporary basis. Um, and then we have this other type of part-time that does receive, um, some paid benefits. And that's, I, I inherited that. So we've had that again for a very long time. As you can imagine, we have some greater longevity with those part-time employees that have, um, and receive some benefits. And, um, those folks have been very, all folks have, are essential. But having some continuity in a person that, um, is able to do more than just one role. The 13.5 unbenefited part-time employee really focuses a lot on doing that shelving work, um, or some kind of, uh, more repetitive work in a single task type work. Uh, whereas the 18.5 benefited role, they could do things like, um, assist on the bookmobile, assist at the public service desk, do some shelving, assist at a program. So, um, they really do, uh, greater variety of work. In early 2023, we really had, uh, a hard time actually recruiting, uh, for those part-time, um, uh, 18.5 roles. And, um, and we were struggling a little bit. And so we did come to council at the end of 2023 with this idea to smoosh together some of those part-time hours and create one full-time position. Um, and so we had a combination of 18.5s and 13.5 hours, um, that we, we pooled together. That pilot was really successful. That teammate's still working at the library. That, um, person is, um, able to do a lot of variety of tasks. They're working 40 hours a week, so they, um, there's some efficiencies in that. Instead of about, you know, five or six people, we have a supervisor managing, you know, one person. And that teammate is now in library school and, um, going on in their, in their journey, but it's still with the library. Over, um, obviously with a, a benefited part-time role, there is some cost in, in that, right? In 2024, we spent over a hundred thousand dollars in paid leave for those, that, that middle-tier employee, that 18.5 benefited employee. So we've really taken this long-term vision of having the temporary part-time employee work being done by part-time 13.5 unbenefited teammates. And with the caveat that we really would like to have to separate this out now as best as we can. Starting at 2023, we had 40 of those 18.5 roles. We have not been refilling them as they have been open. In, right now, we have about 21 that are remaining. So you will see that moving forward, what we're looking for is this, um, you know, one-time increase of four F T E with the plan to continue in this path of not refilling those 18.5 employees. These are union, um, contracted employees. So we would need to, um, let go all of our part-time employees to fully, um, and, you know, not have them at all or do this through attrition. So we are asking to do this through attrition over time. And have four full-time employees instead. And then again, moving forward, having those shelving roles covered by 13.5 not benefited employees. So you'll see a significant reduction from 2025 to 2026 in our part-time budget. Also, there is a, an increase in our full-time budget. I, I acknowledge that as well. Separately, so this is separate from this, um, if we need to do some cost, um, optimization, budget optimization, um, these were the options that we had presented. The library really is people and, uh, books and services. And so for us to be able to make any kind of production in our overall budget, it really is about, um, you know, affecting teammate hours. So this is a, a, a separate, um, piece of the budget process. So if, if, uh, we do not have, um, support for those four full-time positions, it will affect our services because we already have this reduction in that part-time temporary salaries budget line. Meanwhile, we have an increase in circulation, increase in library visits, increase in our programming. We continue to, year over year, see this increase in the number of folks that are, have returned back to the library post-COVID and are really seeking the library out to make those connections, um, to provide an opportunity to bring in their family for, uh, story time or to access our materials either in person or digitally. So, uh, again, the, to really summarize, we're looking for four F T E. That's why we're requesting these to have that greater, um, flexibility in how we utilize those folks, um, and then have that reliability in our budget. When we come to you and ask for, for four F T E, we know that we are asking for a commitment, um, from you. These entry-level roles will provide us an opportunity to, um, have folks that are really focused on being, um, really available to pitch in wherever we need, um, whether it is at the desk or the bookmobile or doing that shelving. Because it is an entry-level role, this, um, allows us to kind of grow our own leaves in that entry-level space. And, um, also it will help us position ourselves as we, uh, move forward on library study recommendations, which we won't dig too deep into that today, but, um, this really is meant to feed into that, uh, as well. So with that, I open it up to your questions.
Council member Palmer.
Thank you. A couple of questions for you. Go back to your slide 21. So option three, you're telling me if we close for one day for 52 times, we're only going to save 111,000 dollars?
So we were asked, we were tasked with, um, how we would, um, reduce the budget by 2%. And, uh, the, what this really was is not having staff service points. A combination of also reducing bookmobile hours, um, because we're people, it's people funded. So it's reducing those hours and not having that work covered, um, for that day. Otherwise, we would need to get into even further, um, cuts to service. So, um, this, yes. A lot of, we're people, we, the money that, that you, that.
I get that you're people and you have a $9 million budget that we just hand over to you guys and you divvy it up and you spend it how you want. We don't have any oversight on that. But you're telling me that, that if I close one day a week, I'm going to save basically a hundred thousand dollars. So just simple math would say for $700,000, I should be able to run a library. If you're all people. Your, your math doesn't make sense to me that if I close a day, I'm only saving a hundred thousand dollars.
We, we did the, 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 the bottom line of, you know, what would we be able to, to save? And it would be not covering those service points. So, you know, nobody able to come in and utilize and interact with our staff on that day. Nobody accessing the bookmobile. We would also be reducing the bookmobile hours. There were some other smaller things like, um, our, you know, library at home.
But, but you, if you closed, you wouldn't be open. So you wouldn't have staff there.
Right. There's a lot that happens, not just at the service points, but behind the desk. So.
Okay, uh, can we stop here? Maybe, uh, if you explained it in the number of hours that are not going to be opened and the number of staff members, then that may help, uh, give it a, a, a little different perspective.
Your, your honor, uh, maybe also just to add, I, I think it's not as easy as just dividing, you know, the budget by days. There's a number of fixed costs that you end up dealing with. Your, your facility is a fixed cost and relatively immovable. Your.
But, but she tells, she's, she's saying that personnel is the biggest part of the.
Council member, can you let Mr. Parish finish his answer?
Your, your collect, your digital and physical collection doesn't, you know, change, you know, by reducing a day per hour. I don't think they factored in the adjustment of any full-time folks. They would spread to different days. I don't think that level of, that is not reflected here. So I, I think there's just some fixed costs that you have. This really just says, we would reduce this, our temporary salary costs for folks on those days doesn't contemplate any other full-time reductions or adjustment in other fixed costs. You maybe get a little bit by, you know, downcycling the energy, but generally speaking, there's a bunch of fixed costs that don't change.
Right. We're open 10 hours. We have nine service points and then we have our bookmobile service point. So we really looked at the not covering those service points, but all of that other work that we are contractually obligated to continue to provide and pay when we have our staff, who are full-time staff. We, that, all of that work is still being done. So books are still being ordered and collections are being curated. We're still planning programs. We're doing outreach to, um, the, um, to a, a school or a program. We're, um, answering reference questions. We are digitizing items. There are, uh, paying invoices. There's a lot of stuff that does happen not at the service point, um, that to make a library be able to provide the services to the community and to build it over 2 million in circulation.
And so, so if you, if you look at other communities in Minnesota, and, and they're not open on Sundays, you know, and you go from Sioux Falls, Cedar Rapids, La Crosse, Duluth, Van Kate, of St. Cloud, Fargo, those are just ones that are not open or not open eight hours a day on a Sunday. And I know in the nineties, we decided to open seven days a week. Why would we, why, why couldn't you close one day and save, and save some dollars?
So, um, we are.
Why, why is Rochester unique? That all these other cities don't have to be, but Rochester has to be.
I would be very curious what their hours were for the, for the full week. We are open about 64 hours. I, I, I imagine Cedar Rapids is also open 64 hours. They're just not open on Sunday. I would be very curious to see. I mean, I think there is, you know, when I looked at other libraries between 58 and 64 is a, a general, you know, number that other libraries open, some are even open longer hours. So for us, we intentionally made the decision to be open on Sundays. And yes, I know it's a more expensive day. We do pay time and a half on Sundays. It is a day that community members really wanted us to be open. So, um, and, and our numbers see that. I mean, we have more visits per hour on Sundays at our library than we do on Mondays or on Thursdays.
So, so the other question I have for you is that you want four more full-time employees, but we're not saving any money if we're getting, getting rid of the, the, the part-time people. So if you're getting rid of eight part-time people, why isn't that not a wash?
So it is 200,000, $214,000 reduction in our temporary salaries. So we did come to the table with a 50/50 split. So we're asking for half of that and providing half of that.
So maybe if I could add the number that's in the decision package chart, that's like 192,000 dollars. That's not what you save if you don't add the full-time positions. That is the netted out dollar amount for full, for full-time positions. If you reduce the number of temporary salary hours that were reduced. So that's what Ms. Limkey is getting at when she's talking about, if we weren't going to have the full-time positions, we likely need to add back the temporary hours unless we are going to have a change in the operational service that people are experiencing at Rochester Public Library.
Yes.
Thank you. Council member, uh, Wall.
Thank you. My, uh, my first question is on, uh, that same page and you partially answered it. I was hoping to see some data as to how many act, people actually come in on a Sunday. I just did, uh, math earlier today, about 670 people per day visit the library if you take the total attendance and divide it by 365. How many come through on a Sunday?
So on a Sunday, um, and, and you need to remember that there are at least 12 days that we are closed for holidays. So it is a little bit higher than that. We see, I think it's over 120 an hour that are coming over, um, on Sunday. So what is that, that number? I know I have that somewhere, but, um.
It'll be nine sixty.
Yeah, it's close to a thousand or more that come on Sunday. Saturdays and Sundays are, are busy. They're gangbuster days.
And when you talk about a half a day, is it the earlier part of the day or the later part of the day?
It's the earlier part of the day. Um, so between 10 and 2. So if, if, um, council were recommending a half-day closure on Sundays, uh, I would, I would campaign for either a 10 or 11 a.m. start time. That is where we absolutely have our busiest time.
And my second question is on your long-term strategy for reducing the 18.5% folks. You, uh, reduced almost half in two years. What would you expect that to be in another two years? My question, I guess, is are there people ensconced in those positions that really hope they do this for the next 10 years? Or you expect it to really phase out?
I think we have a couple. I mean, we have, one of our longest-term employees has been there for 30, over 30 years. I can safely say for over 30 years in a shelving role, an 18.5. And I can see this person staying in until they're ready to retire. Others, the others that, that left, um, quite frankly, and I, and some of the challenges for us filling those positions, we find these really great people that really want a full-time role. So for these positions, four of them would be filled internally. So four of them would go to folks that, four of those part-time positions would go to the four full-time positions at the library. We may have a couple that I think would hang on for, for a very long time. But others, we do see a higher rate, uh, turnover rate than, um, than our, um, full-time positions.
And you indicated the full-time folks, uh, generally do have greater longevity.
Absolutely. And there's, there's so much benefit in having that institutional knowledge, having that, you know, being in and, and kind of seeing the change in your community. You're able to respond and adapt to your community because you are, you've been part of that community. So there's, there's some things that's really hard for us to put a number around as far as what we are saving. But when you're not doing six, you know, six people are, aren't attending a meeting versus one person attending a meeting. I mean, there is some, you're getting some cost benefit over time.
You know, and having read a, a long article in the newspaper about, uh, the staff, uh, at the library this week, seems like 1998. Seems like nineteen ninety-eight was a really good year to, uh, to hire folks. So they stay around for a long time. Councilmember Keen.
Uh, yeah, thanks. Um, again, back on these same charts on, um, chart, that number nineteen, where you talked about the. Thir, or eighteen point five and thirteen point five, they are odd numbers. Did, does that have anything to do with adding up to thirty-two, which is like the equivalent of a full-time? Or is that just weird coincidence?
Your honor, there's just certain levels, uh, uh, for being determined as a public employee. If you work more than fourteen hours per week, you're considered a public employee. Less than that, you're not.
Okay.
And then we have, the, the other is really a creature of our bargaining contract. Certain benefits start kicking in at eighteen and a half hours and up.
All right. So there's some, there's some reason that they're gourpy kind of numbers like this.
Yes.
Yeah.
And my looking at it said, like, if you went from this, I can't remember, let's say forty to, uh, twenty-one. That would have saved the equivalent of like, I think it's eight point some FTEs. But since they're lower paid, it doesn't pay enough to create four positions?
And it's the benefits. I mean, the benefits, they are, they're pricey. I will be completely honest.
But just to clarify, we had nineteen people getting benefits and now we're going to have.
They did not receive medical benefits and there was a lot of.
All right. It's not a full benefit.
Yep, yes, there's, yes.
Okay, that, that's helpful to know. So I think I understand that page better. So there's two things in front of us. One is the, the, uh, part, the part-time to full-time. And I, I want to support that. I think this is, I think, I think we're on the edge of a management decision on how to run a library versus a policy thing. And, but since it needs the extra money, it beca, it has to come to us. So I would support doing that based on the recommendation that the librarians are telling me. It's a better way to run the library. On the second one, boy, this idea of having this nine million dollar library, this asset and then closing it. You know, one eighth of the time, it just seems like a, a silly way of saving money. Especially when we hear Sunday is this like active day. So I, I can't imagine the spin that could happen that would make me want to support that. So th, those are my two positions on there.
Councilmember Miller.
Oh, you didn't have a question.
Mayor Norton.
Well, I don't have a question. I'm just going to do a point of personal privilege. And acknowledge Kim Edson, who is retiring. I think if this isn't her last day, it's one of her very last days after how many years at the library. So I just want to acknowledge all your years of work at the library and thank you for your service while you're here. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Kim. Councilmember Doring.
Yeah, I, um, I agree with my colleague, uh, councilmember Keen. I think it is a sound strategy, uh, to, uh, move towards more full-time employees. And, and reduce the part-time workforce at, at the library, uh, trusting in, in, in the guidance from our librarians there. And I see, um, I see no reason whatsoever to reduce the hours that the library is open. Not only is it a, uh, a, a, a public treasure here in our community. But I think of those members of our community that are unhoused, who have no other place to go, uh, when weather turns bad. Whether that is an extreme heat or whether it's really, um, frighteningly cold outside, who, who seek the library as a place of respite. Who go to the library to apply for employment, who go to the library to learn how to read. Who, who gain, um, just other, uh, other, not, other aspects of knowledge at our library. I, it, it just seems ludicrous, uh, for the minimal amount of savings that we would achieve as a city. To, to even consider closing the library for, for a day of service. So, uh, I would not support that in any way whatsoever.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you. Uh, so I, I agree with councilmember Keen, councilmember Doring. I don't see a reason to pursue these options to reduce hours. I trust that this is a good management strategy. I did want to ask though, because you mentioned the library master plan. I don't see it on our study session calendar. When might we expect to hear an update, uh, now that that's wrapped up?
We really wanted to get through this budget season before coming. Because there is, I mean, this is longer term. This isn't the, the master plan is not tomorrow. It is a, it's our marathon. And I wanted to show up for our sprint. So, um, I would expect in October, November timeframe, whenever Allison tells me.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Ms. Elms, next topic. Thank you.
I guess I will end, thank you, um, Director Lemke. Nice job. I would invite up, I don't know if it, Yeha Zhang. Our, uh, director of parking and transit to, uh, provide some information, uh, that was requested about evening and weekend parking. So Director Zhang.
Good afternoon, um, council president, mayor, council members. Uh, the question that was brought before. This was, uh, what was the subsidy or value of the evenings and weekends for free parking? So. On here is the twenty twenty-four, um, numbers. These are the ramp usage. You'll see that, uh, it's broken out by the ramps and then the big pie chart is the total usage. It's a number of, um, usage, it's not dollar values. You'll see that it's broken up with free exits at four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one. And, uh, the next slide will tell you what that breakdown is. So of that, you'll see that number up there on the total uses of the free. One of the things that we don't have is the aggregation of these free usage. There's different types of free uses. The first hour is free and then also evenings, weekday evenings and then, uh, weekends. And so we made a lot of guestimates, um, for this, uh, spreadsheet that you see here. We broke it out into the three different categories. Um, you'll look at the free, one hour free, uh, assuming. Want to point out that we have here a two dollar, but that's not a rate that is approved. As we're just assuming that that would be the rate. If we were to charge for the one hour, um, and then the total uses. So you'll see that. Also for free weekends and, um, the free weeknights, the hours were also guestimates. We don't have it aggregated. And, and, um, the dollar values that are approved in our fee structure right now. And so the total amount was about one point eight or one point nine.
So just to clarify, the total usages, uh, those are the accurate number of parkers. Or people that are using the ramps and the, uh, the, the, uh, the, the times and the charges are estimates.
Actually, the broken out uses are also guestimates. Um, the total, the number you see up there at four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one. That's the number that we know. And then it's broken out into the three different free categories. Yeah, and those were, were guesses or estimates.
Councilmember Keen.
Uh, yeah, th, thank you. I appreciate this. And, um, I, I want to make sure I understand the numbers. On the one-hour free weekdays. I want to understand that if someone stays like less than an hour, they leave for free. If they stay for two hours, do they get the first hour free?
Correct. So in our rate structure, you'll see, uh, zero to one is zero dollars and then one to one and a half is two dollars, one and a half. Two hours. Now you're checking, but that's, it's broken out that way.
Okay. So, I mean, it doesn't just apply to people who are coming in and leaving quickly. It's actually, uh, a rate applies to all of our. Like if someone's there for five hours, they're paying for four and a half or something like that.
Correct. And so what, what you'll see in the fee structure is the four and a half to five hours is a rate number.
Yeah. So I was the one, I think, that sort of asked for this and thi, this is what I want. This is what I was looking for. I wasn't looking to change how we do it. But I think this data gives us something that says there, there's a real asset that we're using to support, um, our downtown business. And the idea that it's one point eight eight million dollars is helpful for me to know. And, um, I think I want to make sure some of the people who want all kinds of other things from us, will know that these are, these are things that we've decided to give away. In support of Mayo Civic Center, in support of downtown restaurants, in support of a lot of like, uh, and, uh, activating our downtown. I'll, I'll point out that I found articles about, uh, years past where city councils voted to stop doing this. And started having pay for downtown because they were trying to figure out a way to, to, to support the, the parking as an enterprise. So I'm, I'm glad we're doing this, but I, I like having the facts of what we are doing and, uh, I, if you tried to solve all these other problems. It would be way too much for what I need. So I, I wouldn't suggest we try to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Song. Next up, looks like we have budget follow-up, increasing community building fund investment and scholarship request. Mr. Whitman, are you taking this one? Good.
So I believe on the next slide, I have my, uh, the information that was requested. Just want to, uh, council president, uh, mayor and, and, uh, council members, uh. Just want to acknowledge this is the first time I've been asked to provide information for something you want to add to our budget. And, uh, it's, uh, a unique situation. So, uh, uh, it comes from a really good.
I'll just let you know, I'm the one who asked.
Appreciate that. And, uh, the request is, or the, the proposal is, should we establish a scholarship fund? For, uh, uh, the programs that are offered by our community partners. And it, it is a, it comes from a great place. And it runs concurrent with some activities we're having internally with the department and discussions we're having with the park board. That we've had ongoing for several months and, uh, thought this would be a great way to, uh, really handle this request is to continue that work. And what I did is for anybody that reads this, I know, uh, uh, you are familiar with how we provide programs through, uh, program partnerships. And, uh, that, uh, allows us to operate with a very lean staff. In fact, we have one staff member who coordinates all the programs throughout the city. Uh, that happen on our fields and in many of our facilities. And that's in addition to other responsibilities that, uh, they conduct on a daily basis. And, uh, we work with, uh, organizations in the, in the community that, uh, lead their programs with a volunteer. Workforce and, uh, it, it, it's a, we're proud of that system. It, it provides access to many members of the community. However, when you have fee-based activities, uh, you, there's an assumption that there are barriers to, uh, access to those, uh, programs. And we recognize that and we appreciate the request. What we would like to do, uh, we are, uh, in the process of, uh. Uh, doing a lot of outreach with our partners, just finding out how are, what their numbers are, what, what their participation levels are. What they are seeing is, uh, a need in the community. We know many, if not all of them, offer some, uh, form of reduced. Fee access or free access to the programs. We would like to, uh, come back with a metric of what that looks like and what the need really is. And besides the fees, there could be other barriers to, uh, participation that we would like to address in, in this, uh, question. That we're trying to answer here. Uh, so with that, we, uh, I, I believe at the last meeting, uh, it was brought up by, uh. City administration, could this be done, uh, in the interim with the contingency request? We feel strongly that that would be, uh. Recommended, uh, that would allow the park board to come forward with a recommendation for something ongoing after we, we get an idea of what the, what the needs really are. So that is our response to that and we very much appreciate the consideration. And just looking at, uh, just how we can provide more access to these, uh, great programs that we offer through community partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman. And I, I really appreciate the work that you're doing and, uh. And the, the park board and, and your staff hearing what we're, what we're asking for. And just to expand a little bit, and it doesn't necessarily mean a, uh, a supplemental budget request. So, uh, one of the, the, how I framed it when I talked about it was to do the assessment. Of the partners, the groups, the clubs and find out what they're providing now. But also to look at as we move forward with those partnerships. And with any contracts with those that we also look at, is there a, uh, a, uh. A guideline that we have from the city and Parks and Rec that they give a certain percentage. Of their, uh, scheduled time or, uh, or, uh, memberships or what have you. To scholarships or free, uh, free, uh, free access or, uh, or sliding fee sched, schedule. So a little more nuanced than, than, uh, finding out just what the gaps are. And the city filling that gap, but is there an opportunity to maybe have the, the, the clubs. Fill that gap and, uh, and, uh, just the knowledge of finding out what they're doing, I think will be. Very beneficial to, uh, to our decision-making going forward. So, thank you. Uh, Mayor Norton.
Thank you. I think that's certainly worth studying. And also, I guess I had a question about the, the Rochester. Parks Foundation Board and the type of giving that they do, if it's more large-scale purchasing of land. And, and things in parks as opposed to scholarships, but is that also an avenue? Uh, moving ahead that might be able to be tapped as well. So just wondered if you could clarify what they currently do and if that's a possibility.
Right. Uh, the Park Foundation is, uh, uh, they, they are, uh, provide a great service to the community. And to the department. I, I would say they've kind of grown from a grassroots organization to a fundraising organization. Spending a lo, a lot of time seeking grants and, uh, alternative funding sources to come back to Parks and Recreation. But this would be, uh, a, a really good role for them to play in, in seeking community funds for, for this, uh, purpose for this effort.
Uh, councilmember Palmer.
Well, la, last week, um, the idea that, that I was, was talking about was, um, the city council taking some of the contingency funds. And, and putting it in a fund for scholarships. So we kind of put our money where our mouth is that we want to have that. We have to wait till the park board kind of comes back with their report. But you have, you know, the running club has for fifty years. Has done Tuesday nights down at the Soldier's Field for free. And so, you know, they're running down there. The running club, uh, helped pay for the, the track to be rebuilt and pays for maintenance on that. Um, and so, you know, how do you take that versus a soccer team? And it's not just the, the dollar amount that they have to sign up to be a fee to do it, but also for the equipment. And, and so, you know, for me, I think if we could find some way of, of, of starting that fund for an up to dollar amount to say, hey. The city council thinks this is important to offer scholarships also to help out our nonprofits, um, who are also probably doing a lot of fundraising that, that we don't know about.
And just to that point, councilmember Palmer, I, I agree with you and, and I'm very open to the contingency fund. For city-funded scholarships, but also one of the other points. And maybe in your, uh, in your, uh, assessment of the groups. If you can talk about how much marketing they do regarding these scholarship funds. Because I think if the word isn't getting out to the communities that can use them, I think then that's, that's an issue we can address as well. Councilmember.
Well, I'm, I mean, to, to follow up on that, the city could also do that. If we have contingency funds or we have a fund set aside, we could save through the park and rec. You come ask for these dollars. I mean, we have a, um, a great resource here with, with, um. Building your community fund and, and it's been a really good resource. And is that the place that that goes? Does it go to park and rec? And they have good outreach and, and, and I've been very, very impressed with the community building fund. And, and so I, I really want us to, to look at that. But we as a city could advertise to say, hey, park and rec has, has scholarship funds. This is the recommendation and, or, or this is the, the fee schedule.
Good point. Uh, Ms. Elmsen, and we do have councilmember Miller on, in the queue.
I just wanted to, if I can make, provide a little bit of perspective that builds on what everyone is saying. And, um, we've had a lot of conversations across the team about all the different ways that there could be gaps or barriers. And so I think the robust look at it, um, is probably the best way to get the most robust programming. Uh, but I just wanted to point out that as of today, we have six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of twenty twenty-five contingency left. Not saying that's how much you should use, but there's a fair amount of room. Um, there is a small request on Monday's meeting, um, but you would still have, um, if that's approved. Six hundred thousand dollars. So it, it's not as if you don't have a fair amount of room to work with. When we're talking about operations and programming and being able to build something for twenty twenty-six that then could come forward in twenty twenty-seven. Or years beyond in a variety of different ways.
Councilmember Miller.
Sure. Uh, my question goes to councilmember Palmer's mention of the community building fund, but you also through the park board have the community engaged resources fund. Is there an opportunity to give us an update on how that program's gone? It was still listed on the website as a pilot program, but it's a hundred thousand dollars per year. That's set aside from referendum dollars, correct?
That is correct. And, uh, just, uh, I believe it was that, uh, uh, not our most recent meeting, but the prior month's, uh, park board meeting. August, uh, we, we, uh, had a brief discussion about, uh, kind of regrouping on that program. Uh, what we're finding, the original intent that came, uh, before the board was, uh, just making sure we had a fund. For, uh, as, as. As, as a request comes up mid-project for an amenity that was not thought of at, at the beginning. Or similar requests that we would have that fund to, to address some of those needs. It kind of evolved into more of a public facing, give us some proposals. And we, we've, we've, we've not completed this discussion. I'm not speaking for the board, but that's the question that's before them that we're, we're working on is, should we? When we have so many unmet needs that we're trying to work on, it, it seems a little odd that we're opening up to the community for additional ideas. And so we're trying to find the balance there of how to, how to address that. But some of these needs would, would also fit into that category of.
I appreciate that. I just think to the point of where potential funding comes from and who gets to administer it and what the role the council has. I would love for, to contemplate that partnership with the park board, especially because there are already referendum dollars set up. Especially if we were to establish, say, a pilot scholarship fund, that seems like an interesting place to consider if there are funds available. Already through referendum dollars, it wouldn't be an add to, you know, the levy or other supported places.
Councilmember Keane.
Yeah, first I'll just say, you know, thanks to my peers who are sort of championing this. Oh, Councilmember Palmer has been bringing this up for over 18 months, trying to say, how can we open up the schools and council president? So it's, it's good to see it being like started, but I am also glad to see we have work to do. We can't just say, no, there's money and if they, I mean, we, when I worked with the YMCA, we had a hard time figuring out what the qualifications were. And we ended up using the county as the correct way to do it, but I don't even know if those things work anymore. I, I would be, I would be worried as we get into something like this, that we work with some group that has a very informal way of giving out. Scholarships and doesn't have any sort of tracking of it. So I, again, I really think it's a good thing to be trying to do, to try to knock down these barriers. And I, and I think it is a reasonable sort of expense, but I, it is not like, it's, it's, it's not easy to do. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Just one quick comment. We're getting some really good feedback from this very question from our program partners. Of course, we've been working with them for years, but really having this intense look over the past few months. And most, what, what we're finding is very positive that there, there's, there's a lot of outreach that we don't know about. That we're going to be very excited to report when, when we get all the information gathered.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, we have a budget follow-up on three 11 allocations. Oh, I'm sorry. Am I? Did I miss one? Oh, I tried to take over here. And I will turn it back to administrators.
I think Director Motello is ready to go with.
Oh, community building fund. See, I was looking at the major.
Futuristic.
Uh, graphics as my roadmap. So I apologize. Community building fund, Ms. Mortella.
No problem. Council President, Mayor, council members and community that have joined us. I'm also here like Director Whitman, because there's a recommendation to increase funding. And so if that's the question, I'll say yes. But otherwise, I would like to just provide an overview. I think we've discussed this a couple of times. The community building fund was established in 2024 when the diversity council sunsetted. In an effort to meet the needs of community members who had great ideas and are wanting to meet needs based on their lived experiences. But also based on maybe idealistic ideas that they have. A lot of these community members do not have a 501(c)(3) and not able to apply for other grants. So in that first year, we did not start dispersing funds until about mid-year. And those were dispersed in about five months. So they went by fairly quickly. Our initial allocation, that base allocation was for $50,000. And folks could apply for up to $5,000 in funding. So to clarify, someone could apply for $300 or all the way up to $5,000, depending on what their need was for their idea. Ideas ranged from food access to art and murals to programming festivals, that type of thing. But what was amazing about that is there was so much participation that there was a CIA brought forward to say, could we have additional funding halfway through the year? For 2026, 2025. So in 2025, we had a base allocation of $50,000 for the small grants, as we started to call them. Those that could be awarded up to $5,000. And then an additional $50,000 for large grants that could be awarded up to $20,000. There's a little bit of a more comprehensive overview and application process for those larger grants, but that was one time allocation. And so I think just providing that brief overview, noting there that to date we've dispersed up to $150,000. We do have city teammates that are part of that review team. We alternate those teammates so that we're having a broad number of teammates who are able to participate in that experience. And I think the ask here is, is there a possibility to add additional funding? And it is not my decision about where that would come from, but really to provide you an overview and answer any questions that you might have for me.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, thank you. And, and I appreciate the community building fund. And, and I like, one of the things I like about it is that it's a committee that decides that. And, and for me, I think the larger grants, you know, we did $20,000. And I don't know if $10,000 is the dollar amount or what, what is the upper amount? Do you think would be a good dollar amount to have? She's a reasonable person.
I do think if the allocation was the same, a total amount of $50,000 for large grants, but a maximum of 10,000 for each, that would be more reasonable. Because we did allocate four of them, and I think most of them were in that nine, $10,000 range. And I think our ask in this case for the larger grants is we want people who are also supplementing that funding from additional resources. And so to allocate $20,000, I think is quite large. And reducing that to 10,000, that would also allow us to award more people on that larger grant than we initially did.
Okay. And, and last year, the gospel, it was February, I guess, the gospel one was our big one.
Yes.
And, and that was well attended?
It was very well attended. And then we do require them to provide us some feedback from that particular event or any event that's held back. But there was really great attendance from it.
Is that for your large grants? You asked for the feedback?
For all grants, we asked for feedback. There is more robust feedback required for the larger grants. But we ask for feedback from all the grants and then generate a report at the end of each year.
Because I saw the numbers from the large grants and, and I was impressed with the, with the comments and the, and the ability on those. So I'd be supportive of, of going down to 10,000 for the large grants and that. I have another question though. I know in the mayor's budget that she has initiative fund. That's $36,000. If we move that over to you, would that help you out with your committee to be able to, to take those funds and redistribute them through a committee?
Councilmember Palmer, I think that would be a question more for the mayor, because I think that's a budget that she is in charge of and probably has some work that she does from that funding. So I'm not quite able to speak on whether or not that funding can be moved over.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Keane.
Well, again, I, this is again, my peers bringing this up and I actually support the idea. But I, I think Councilmember Palmer couldn't come up with a dollar amount. So let me, let me try. These were $50,000. I know that the $10,000 is the limit on the thing, but I'm going to make the suggestion that we go up. 50% of what the two funds have and have them at $75,000 for the small applications and the large applications. And that is a $50,000 add-on to the thing. And now we have to decide whether that's going to be a trade-off or that's something that we go as almost like a decision pack and add it to the decision packs.
Can I ask for clarity? So are you suggesting a total of $75,000? Or are you suggesting 75,000 for the small grants and the additional 25,000 being for the large grants of up to $10,000?
Well, I use the dollar amounts because I thought they both have $50,000 limits right now. And I was raising the limits to 75 for each of them.
The budget right now is a total of $50,000.
Okay. It looks here like there's a small and large.
That was the one time funding. So I just, that's why I'm looking for clarity.
All right.
Administrators, can you clarify for us what is in the budget now for this program? And then what's, then we can get to what the proposed.
The annual budget that is in your current recommended budget for the program is $50,000 annually.
Let's start from there. Yeah. So start from there. I, I, again, I, can you break down which part is the large and which part is smaller? There is no large.
There is no large. That was a one-time pilot.
Okay. Then I, my proposal would be to add 50% funding to this and you, with the $10,000 limit. And it would be a $25,000 cost to the budget. Did you, is, is that underst-
I, I heard add 50,000, but a $25,000 cost to the budget?
No, I, I take, there's only one fund, 50,000.
Add 25,000.
50%, which is 25,000.
I see. Two, two 75,000. Yeah. I was like, where are you subtracting out that other 25,000?
With, yeah, with the 10,000.
Okay. So I think more to add to your, it's good to, I mean, appreciate you putting some, something on the table. Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, I, I think Councilmember Palmer in the last meeting suggested we keep it at the 2025 level or $100,000 split between the two programs. Cap the large at $10,000 each.
That was the recommendation and that would be adding $50,000 to your recommended budget.
So I, I would be in favor of, of keeping it at the $100,000 level from 2025. I think again, to Councilmember Palmer's point, it's been very successful in the drawing the applications. Obviously, learning about the average ask, it makes sense to lower that cap to 10. But again, I, I don't see a reason, especially as we've moved to inclusive growth management and inclusive decision-making. To limit the access we're giving to the community to help distribute some city funds to programs that are emerging from the community itself.
I just want to clarify for everyone, that would be increasing the recommended budget by $50,000 of tax levy, which is virtually nothing in what you're actually levying. Across the entire city since your tax levy for 2025, I probably don't have that, that would be too easy. Is, is recommended, I believe it's 118 million dollars.
Correct. That, that would be my proposal would be to increase the 2026, 27 recommendations by $50,000 each. To keep the funding level for this fund at $100,000.
Thank you.
And administrators, Ms. Mortella, could you remind us why we had 100,000 this year? And we're going, it's budgeted at 50,000 now?
The initial allocation was $50,000 because that's the amount of money that we would fund or share with the diversity council when they were supporting this type of programming. And so that money moved over to the community building fund at $50,000 as the base allocation. And then Councilmember Palmer brought forward a CIA, I believe it was August of 2024, requesting an additional $50,000. I believe that was from contingencies.
It was one time contingency dollars. So it didn't change your baseline of tax levy.
Right. And that's why we ended up with the $100,000 in 2025. But really the base allocation is only $50,000.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Keane and then Councilmember Wall.
Yeah, again, I, I understand the, the goal here. I'll, my, my, my concern here is that when I was watching this, the small grants were gone, did we say by June?
Yes, in about six months.
Yeah. And I was trying to increase that one too, because I think that's a big, more of an impact. So I, I'll just add that to the discussion and see where we go.
Councilmember Wall. Oh, were you going to respond? Councilmember Wall.
I would stand with Miller and Palmer and say, go with the 50/50. In large part because of what Mr. Keane just said, the grants were used profitably this year almost immediately. I can't imagine that it will be any different in years to come.
Councilmember Dory.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with raising the entire budget to, to that hundred grand with the 50/50 split or even a 60/40 split. With 60 in, in small and 40 in large with, depending on, on the amount of applications we get for the program, right? So.
Administrator's own.
And I was just going to clarify that I think it's important, what Director Motello was saying is that it's up to, it's been up to a certain amount. And so as the team is, they have a quite a rubric that they go through. And even if someone's up to 5,000, if they request 5,000 and they feel like $3,500 seems more appropriate. There's a variety of different amounts. And so I, if, if we have the trust that they would move through that process and maybe we can be doing a mid-year report, something of that nature. Which would provide you some perspective about how that's shaking out as far as sometimes they're very small grants. But they're very impactful, even some of those three and $500 grants that go out.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you. I, I just add also, given the prior discussion about scholarship fund and perhaps the community engaged resources and engagement with the park board. I just wonder if there's an opportunity to share some of the rubric and process that you've gone through with city teammates to create this successful program. And as that program is kind of in a rethinking phase, if maybe there's an opportunity to share your success with the park board. As I think about, you know, ways to engage, especially if we talk about park activation and all the benefits that come from there, if, if there's a way to collaborate. I know that's obviously a totally separate board, but I think you're doing a great job and would love to see this program continue to grow and best practices offered throughout the city.
Councilmember Keane.
I, I just want to weigh in a little bit again on my thing with the small and large. I really like Councilmember Doring's idea of maybe a 60/40 split or something like that. I don't know how other people feel, but one of my goals here was to have more of those small micro things as opposed to the big and the, the bigger awards. I think those can have more, more groundswell impact. So I, I would, I would lean for that. And I just want the staff to hear it and my peers.
I, I guess what I would just add on to is I think, I'll ask Director Motella if she would be open to coming back with maybe, maybe there's like a micro, small and large. That comes back and based on looking back at things, there's an opportunity, or maybe it's just providing flexibility. Within that to make sure that we're meeting as many needs as possible, recognizing the dollar amount, the time of year, et cetera.
And I would add that it is true, we do get many more applications for the smaller grant. And I think then maybe we could tier it somehow to make sure that people within certain amounts have the opportunity to apply. So that's something we could come back definitely and present to you. Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a budget follow-up on three, three, 311.
Uh, thank you, Council President, council members. There was a question about cost allocation for the, I guess it's a year old now, almost a year old 311 service that was implemented. Last year and has had significant upticks every month, but it's been, been in place. So we did cost allocations for some longer time departments. We also just split out some of the communication engagement and 311 from administration to, how's that in its own administrative category? So that we can look at the budget more clearly. So we did not actually cost allocate for 311. It is quite a new service. But we would intend each year going forward to revisit these cost allocations. They, they could adjust upwards or downwards depending on the support we're providing to the non-levy funded entities. So they do recommend that we be looking at that on a regular basis. And there's not really a one size fits all cost allocation method that is recommended from the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a group that we look to for best practices. So we would plan to continue to look at that and where are we seeing the distribution of calls? And I guess another question that maybe comes up about 311 is, you know, how is it impacting our services citywide? It's still quite a new service and there is a decision package that requests adding a call taker. So right now we have two call takers and a working supervisor. And the goal of adding the third call taker is that the working supervisor is working a little bit less on call taking and more on streamlining those processes. With the departments that we're supporting so that their technical staff that's got great skillsets in specific areas and delivering the outcome that a community member is looking for. Is able to move forward and actually deliver the service while routing the calls, providing the answers and the customer service. In, in a way that's coming from that call center. So I guess a simple answer from a cost allocation perspective is that's not contemplated in the current cost allocations that are, that are being ramped in through the 2026 and 2027 budget. But those are things that we will continue to look at, not just for 311, but across all of those services that are listed there. Administration, city clerk's office, attorney's office, finance, IT and human resources. And if there are other new or adjusting services that come on board, I could think of things like the community connectors. Are utilized across the organization. Again, that's a small amount, so be negligible, negligible impact if there was cost allocation. For a cost that's about $70,000, but those are things that we're, we would be looking at long-term for the structural integrity of the budget and how cost allocations should work.
Thank you. Any questions on 311? Moving on, Councilmember Palmer.
Is there any, any thought or, or a cost that if we extended from just business hours to like 12 hours a day?
Oh, 12 hours a day, you'd be looking at something opposite of what you were hearing from the library. So there's, I mean, we could look at something like that. I think that would be a pretty significant cost because you would be looking at, based on the types of labor contracts that we have with different employees. And overtime that might be necessary, things of that nature. Overtime, I just said overtime, over a period of time, we, it might be something. And overtime that might be necessary, things of that nature, um, over ti- I just said overtime, over a period of time, um, we, it might be something that you would wanna look at. I don't think most cities have three one one operating twelve hours a day, but some operate sort of a, uh, early morning hour and a later in the evening hour with a more limited calls, like less calls for service. Sometimes come in during that time, at least in my experience, um, in another community that operated a three one one system, they were open. From seven AM to six PM and the seven AM to eight AM and the, I guess here four thirty to six PM would. It, it typically there's less calls that come in during that period of time. Um, but those are things you could look at, um, twelve hours a day would. Seven days a week, did you say, or just hours, Monday through Friday?
Well, I'm, I'm just.
It would be significant.
I'm, I'm just trying to get it better for the residents out there and, and a lot of them have questions that not eight to five and, and, and. You know, I've had experience with Mankato and it's a great system. And at seven o'clock in the morning, if you're a building contractor, um, that's the time to do it. But if I have to wait till eight o'clock, that, that kinda goofs things up. So I'm not, I'm not saying twelve hours, I'm just saying. Some hour difference. The other one is there's gotta be some cost savings that you can pull out of other departments that, uh, you know, that, that take a lot of phone calls and they should be.
And we did pick up some of that, that, thank you for the comment and question. We did actually pick up some of that cost savings in the initial implementation of three one one. We brought a teammate over from another department, so those weren't all new positions. Um, you referenced another community, I believe they have seven call takers and a supervisor, um, where we currently have two and a supervisor. So that maybe gives you, and they, they're open an extra hour. On each end of the day, um, and they have a little bit of overlap in their schedule. They also don't have twenty bargaining units, um, they have eleven. But, um, so there's just some nuances that, that might exist there, but there, there are opportunities over time to lean into that three one one. And I would suggest that adding that, uh, call taker would really free up a wonderful employee. Um, George is excellent at working with departments to make sure that. The inputs that we're getting when someone calls for, um. A concern about something that the answer that they're getting, sometimes that comes from the department. Um, isn't, you know, closed out necessarily, but we're closing this and this is what we're going to do about it. So a lot of that backend is, is something that you build up over time as you learn. Um, how to, how the different departments are utilizing it and how they could be utilizing it. So great point. Uh, I think it's something that, uh, we would intend to. Be leaning into more over time, um, but we wanna make sure that we're scaling that at the pace with which. People are able to accept change and change is really hard, um, for some departments of the, definitely an adaptive change where there's a feeling of loss when you don't control something. Uh, but I think over time, the community will see that it actually is providing them a lot better information because even when we provide them information, if it's. You know, yes, we will get to the concrete sometime after March thirtieth is when we would expect there to be weather where we could address this issue. People know then when to, to call back again. And so some of those little things, they seem really little, uh, but they're really helpful to people to understand what's happening with the, the requests that they've put in.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to, uh, budget follow-up, city council budget. That next?
But Arborist were next.
I think it's city council budget, but I can't change it from this far away. Can you change it for me? There you go. Thank you. Um.
Unless you wanna send some park board, uh, money to the city council budget?
Mr. Nigbert will be presenting the council budget. Um, so this was a question about what is in the council budget. Um, and so this is one page of your budget document. So if you've, um, been in the flipping book, by the way, the flipping book is actively working on our website, um, or you can do the old fashioned PDF. Um, we, there's a number of different things here, obviously the, um, cost of the salaries for and, and other related expenses related to. Um, city council and, um, the stipends that you receive, um, there is, uh, cost there, um. Some of the less obvious things that are here contractual, uh, maintenance and repair. Um, you can see, um, on the right-hand side is primarily related to, um, Granicus, which is how we're housing all of your agenda. Management as well as, um, Zoom expense to make sure that you have, um, a different opportunities for people. Um, to zoom in and multiple ways for them to view, uh, a- as well as the cable, um, view that exists. I'm gonna go to the right and left because that's where the boxes fit. If you move down to expert and professional services, which is the next line. Um, that's primarily going to be your annual audit, um, and the expense of that and having, and. That's something that we're required to do, um, for your charter and also state law. Um, communications, so the cell phone stipends, um, are there in the communications line, um, travel and training, uh, that. Maybe is self-explanatory, but I just wanted to point out that that's returned to the twenty twenty four level of travel and training. Um, subscriptions, um, and, uh, and memberships that is almost entirely, uh, League of Minnesota Cities and National League of Cities. And then a very small amount for Minnesota Transportation Alliance and I think fifty dollars for the Southeast Minnesota. Um, Southeast Minnesota League of Municipalities. Um, so that's the lion's share of the dollars that are in, um, the city council budget and happy to.
Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, thanks. I was the one who requested this, so I appreciate being able to dive in a little deeper and, uh, several of us being in the first year. I'm, I'm curious about a couple of things. Advertising, publishing and printing is well short of the budget. And the twenty twenty five budget is well in excess of the twenty twenty four actuals. Has that been spent in the past? Do we have access to more? Printing, publishing, mailing, some communication service that is not being used?
I believe the primary cost for that is the required public notices that go out for.
Okay.
The agenda. And also any printing that we do of the packet, but I didn't actually get details on that item.
Okay, just curious why that was, uh, seemingly budgeted well in a, makes excessive actual expenses, um. And then for the subscriptions, uh, does that cover the entirety of the League of Minnesota Cities cost or is it allocated? I mean, like, because they, there are services that are provided through the league, correct, to just the city generally? Is that true?
That's the entire amount and that's just always been put budgeted in the city council budget. If you moved it to another budget, it would have no change on tax levy.
No, thank you. I, I just trying to understand where, where some of these costs end up going. And then, uh, like for Zoom and Granicus, again, we're using Granicus for all agendas, not just the council agendas, correct?
Correct, but that's the lion's share of the cost of Granicus and Zoom.
And then, uh. Yeah, okay, I'm, again, just trying to think about, um, because. I know questions have come up about like support and how the council best does the role. And so I'm just trying to make sure that we. Have clear sense of what resources are available, um, as far as communicating with the public and. So I'm just curious if somewhere in that advertising, publishing, if there's.
So the advertising and publishing that the city does comes out of the communications and engagement budget primarily or within certain departments that maybe have other publications, but we don't. Generally have individual, we don't provide individual advertising and publishing for any individual city council member.
Okay.
Or we haven't, and I think that might be a question for our city attorney.
Sure. Just curious about communications resources and, um.
I would just point out though, that in twenty twenty four, the actual. Um, costs for, maybe I'm reading the longer, wrong line item of publishing was a bit higher.
Okay.
Oh, I was reading the wrong line item for the entire time of that conversation.
Okay. Uh, last question, what was the, uh, roughly ten thousand dollar decrease in subscriptions, memberships from twenty four to twenty? Or? The budget decreased significantly for twenty five from twenty four?
That was the decrease that the, are you in travel and training?
No, subscriptions, memberships, uh, from twenty four actuals, seventy two thousand five hundred to twenty twenty.
I don't know what the reduction was to that unless we maybe moved some of the, I mean, I.
Okay.
Ha, I, that was a two years ago, three?
Okay.
I could find out. We probably were adjusting the baseline to what we've been spending.
All right, I appreciate Councilmember Palmer has a question, but I, I also, I did, I was not here last time, but appreciate Councilmember, Member Miller, uh, bringing this forward. Uh, just from a clarification, so you said. That our, uh, audit services are under expert and professional services.
Correct.
What is contractual maintenance and repair, which is a?
Contractual maintenance and repair is your Granicus, like the Granicus platform?
That is, oh, that is that. Okay, all right, I see that. Okay, Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. Um, how, how many of our bud, or of our packets are we, um, printing?
I believe we print a certain amount for the public, which is required. It's mostly just the agenda.
We got one at the front and one at the library. Is that what we print?
One. And then some like agenda, just, just the, like line item agenda at the council meeting.
Okay, and, and the bugaboo for me is the training and travel again, and, and I don't see why we're increasing that. Um, we, we voted last time not to, it doesn't seem to be a, a problem this year, so I'm not sure why we're increasing that.
Um, Councilmember Palmer, Councilmembers, I adjusted that back to the twenty twenty four level because that was a discussion early on in April when we talked about factors influencing the budget. And there seemed to be consensus that a majority of council members felt like it should return to the amount that was in twenty twenty four.
Yeah, and I, I would be one that would be in favor of, uh, putting it back to the twenty twenty four figure, uh. From what I recall, I was not on the council, but the council, uh, in, uh, with the levy that, uh, you had last year, we're looking for. Uh, decision packages to reduce that budget under ten percent or that levy under ten percent in that's. Uh, where fifteen thousand was taken. So I, I think it's, uh, helpful to the city of Rochester and us learning from other communities, uh. That, uh, travel and professional services is a benefit to the council. Mayor Norton.
Well, I'm gonna delve into an unpopular topic here and that's salaries. Um, one of the things that I learned when I first got here was that the, the council, um, is put in that horrible position of having to vote for their own salary increases. And it's uncomfortable and the community balks at that. Um, and so it wasn't done for many, many years. And then it gets out of whack. And I thought one of the things that we had done as part of the conversation was say that we were gonna set it as a percent of the average median income of the community. Knowing that we still had to vote on that amount every time it came forward each year. And it doesn't look like that concept has been. Put into the budget. And so I just, I'm worried that we will get in the position again. You know, maybe folks are fine this year, but in the future, if we, if we have this attitude that we never raise salaries, then when it happens. It's a large jump and everybody screams and it's very uncomfortable for the council to have to vote on it anyway. But it's way more uncomfortable for them to have to do it when the amount has gotten to a point where it seems too large for the community to stomach. So I'm, I'm just raising that issue because I see it looking the same every year and I thought it was. Tied to the average median income. And Ms. Elms has a question.
Uh, I have an answer. Council President, uh, Mayor, so the reason that we haven't included that is because the last time the city council voted to increase the, the salary, which does have to be voted on every year. And tying it to the average median income is challenging to do in the budget is because that last vote said that, and the city staff should not bring it forward unless the city council recommends it. So we were not to budget for it per the last vote and that's the last vote that applies, even though we have a new council unless a new vote happens. One way that cities do this is that they start at some sort of base and then. Sometimes, but they will approve a resolution which still has to get approved by ordinance every single year with the budget to adjust by the same cost of living adjustment that other. Labor contracts are adjusting. Obviously you don't have a labor contract, but those are ways, some, some ways that you could think about doing that that wouldn't. Be as variable as. At, like you've, you got to an average median income of eighty, a hundred and a hundred and twenty percent in a year. And so from there, you could make an adjustment and adjust moving forward, but there was clear direction that I was not to bring this up unless the city council directed me to.
And, and man, uh, city administrator and Mr. Chair, uh, the reason I brought this up is because we have a new council who. Wasn't part of some of that discussion and I want this issue on the table so they know what happens should they choose not to address it. And they can choose not to address it. I'm not saying they have to. I'm just saying, if you don't, we get to that position again where you have a huge jump and it's very unpopular in the community. It is much easier to do what I thought we were going to do with my request, that every year it would be whatever the cost of, it's not really the cost of living, but whatever the. Average median income is of a resident in Rochester based on that resolution we passed. So I just bring it up so they're aware of what we did, why we did it. And give them food for thought, maybe not for this year, but in a future year to think about.
Any other questions on this topic area? Moving on to, uh, 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 budget follow-up for the arborist decision package.
Council President, Members of Council, Mayor. Ms. Rose Elms, my apologies for jumping in earlier. I was just so excited to share this information, so, um. Really, it's not that exciting, but I do wanna start off with, um. Two things that we're not on this, these slide deck here, the, the two, two slides we have forward for you is this morning on NPR, there's actually a, a. Segment down talking about the health of trees and natural areas about how that benefits our community and individuals alike. And again, very pertinent to our conversation today, that's why we're doing things from a sustainability standpoint, for the health of our community, et cetera. The second on today that came forward was, we were just served as a notice to, uh, for insurance claim on a tree that fell on private property from our, one of our parks. So again, very pertinent to what we're talking about today is that sustainability of our, of our urban forest. On the slide in front of you, you've got several categories of kind of fun facts of what we're doing and why we've done things, how we've done things in the past. So nineteen seventy five, we had, you know. Arborists intact, we did a certain number of trees. And we've had only two arborists added since that point in time and a lot more trees, a lot more growth in the city, et cetera. So that, unlike what you've heard elsewhere about the size of city growth or the water mains, the streets growing in, in numbers of sizes over the years as well. With the same issues that are outstanding for us. Along with that though, we've got things that are happening where as the city grows, trees grow along with that creates other issues for us liability wise. And backlog, when you don't have staff to support the number of calls coming in through three one one or other means. So. Right now we've got a backlog of, of activities going on with our, our tree system that we wanna help starting to address. When you start addressing those things, you start addressing the liability issues that go, are, are out there, both our public trees and our public boulevards, as well as on our public parklands. It really gets back down to what we're doing right now. Again, right now we're under a current cycle of about a twenty year pruning cycle. And again, when you have that long of a cycle between prunings of, of trees, things can happen. People get upset, you get the calls, we get the calls. We're just trying to avoid that by going forward, bringing staff on to better account for these activities. And the other thing that we can't control is the storm activities that are happening out there right now, climate change. Climate change is real, whether you wanna account it for one activity or another, but it's really happening. And as we've seen over the last seven years or so, those calls come in, we've got a staff of six that responded to that. And again, supportive staff to help out in those evening calls as, you know, grounds people or whatever. Uh, but these people that are in the, in the buckets, cutting trees at nighttime, it's a dangerous situation. And again, having a few more staff on, on board. Taking care of vacations or while they're out sick or whatever, helps support our team to, to do that work properly and safely. That storm response is a big deal. And again, we called in for, uh, by E O C stand-up, we're getting ready to go out, there's a big storm coming. We're one of the first on the scenes for those windstorms and tornadoes that are out there responding to trees down and roads blocked, along with our other partners like RPU and Public Works. So we're out there just along with them. With that though, you know, we've made a good case, I think, for support of an additional arborist on, on our team. We're small but mighty and I think we could do a better job with more team members. So with that, I'll open for questions.
Any questions on this one? Uh, Councilmember Palmer, go ahead.
My, my understanding, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is that your position or the department's position is the only person that can touch a tree in Rochester on the boulevard. Is a arborist.
That is not correct.
Okay.
I'll clarify.
Now, I know the homeowner can, uh, uh, take a test and, and do their own.
We have, we have several programs where homeowners can participate in, in maintaining some boulevard tree activities, but we have, uh, other landscape technicians that maintain, helps maintain our tree system as well from the ground. They're not using saws, uh, they're not up in the buckets, uh, taking down trees, like in the picture up on the screen right there. Yeah, we're talking a different skillset than most people have and it is dangerous work. I mean. We have these people certified for a reason because of the quality of care they provide for urban forestry and for our public that are out there. So again, it's not for everybody. We do have people do tree work, uh, on their own and sometimes it's a, an issue that we have to go back and correct and charge for. Because again, they've damaged the tree to a point where it gets removed or it takes a lot more work to correct that.
Okay, and I understand that it's dangerous. I'm not, I'm not discounting that. Um, but do we have to hire employees to do that? Couldn't we go out and say to contractors out there that we have this many trees and we want you to come out and take care of them during the year?
We, we can, and we actually do have a contract services, a fairly good sized budget for contract services that are out there. Again, we do stump grindings, tree removals, tree prunings as part of that activity. And again, tree prunes is less so, but the tree removals are out, already out there doing contract services work. Uh, we also hire contractors for work on private properties when we get calls that it's a dangerous or hazardous tree. We bring those folks out there to take care of that private property activity. So again, we hire contractors in a, in a great scheme across our, our, our organization, both in parks and in forestry boat.
But, but couldn't you do a? But, but couldn't you do a balancing act here and go, you know, $153,000 for an arborist? How much can we contract and how much more work and, and how much more can we get done that way? That's, that's where I look at, at doing it. I spend a lot of time on sidewalks and trails and, and I know you have a lot of trees in the parks and a lot of your trails on the, uh, the trees on the sidewalks, you know, are six foot two. So I mean, um, you, you don't do a great job all the time on, on keeping them trimmed. So, um, you, you know, so that's, that's where my, my bugaboo is with this.
So it's a fair question. I would say that, you know, inherently with city staff members, we don't have a profit margin that we build into our budget. So when you hire a private contractor, they want to make money on it and they bid for the projects and they do want to make money. So again, they want to account for the cost of their labor, the cost of the equipment, the cost of the gas and profit margin on top of that. We don't have that part of it in our system here. While we do have good benefits and good salaries, it's not even close to offset of what they're making in, in the profit side of things.
Yep. Thank you.
Mayor Norton.
I'm just going to jump in on this one a little bit and because it's, it's something that Mr. Nigbor hasn't mentioned, which is when there is an emergency in our community, like some of those weather events, we as a community have to respond and sometimes they do contract work. I've seen that. And one of the things that we have seen at times of emergency is that the prices that are charged actually go up at the time of emergency and it costs more. And that was seen very clearly at a time we were trying to fill out a report for FEMA reimbursement. And FEMA told us, you're paying way too much for your tree service. So I understand businesses can make money at times of crisis and I can't blame them for trying to do that. But if we have our own arborists who can respond, uh, rather than just completely relying on contract services, we actually might save a little bit of money. So that was just from my experiences past year.
Thank you, Mary. If I may, I would just point out that our arborists don't just do tree removals or tree cutting. They do plantings, they do education, they do inspections. So it's, it's kind of the gamut of what they do. And again, we can hire lots of things out, but again, there's a skillset there that you can't really replace easily in one fell swoop for one person across the entire, uh, organization.
Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate you mentioning education because I imagine that that's something that gets pushed to the backlog or, or a different priority when you have such a big backlog of tree work. And to Councilmember Palmer's point, I also have noticed that along many of the trails and sidewalks that there are trees overhanging or branches overhanging. And I wonder how much of that educational piece can be used to empower the community to get a better benefit from being able to staff up to the level we need. And I think it's always striking to me when I see how much our city has grown in square miles and how little we have grown in staff. And I think it's a major risk because when we do have to go out and contract work, when it does become an emergency, we have no control of that cost. And so I, I think this is a, a good, smart decision. And I, I am supportive of this decision packet for all those reasons.
Thank you. I'll just say that from an education standpoint, we do a lot of education, both from a, when our, our members are out in the field talking with the neighbors, talking about how they do the trees, what the goals are going to be, et cetera. But also through SAC programs, et cetera, our team participates in those activities. You know, Arbor Day is a big factor that we, we work with RPU on that on a, on an annual basis, again, education based. But things like that are a lower priority than taking care of the high-risk trees or the emergency trees or those things that, um, need to get done right away. The prunings, low hanging over the sidewalk does drop down in that priority, but we get lots and lots of calls on that.
Councilmember Dory.
I agree with, uh, Councilmember Miller's sentiments here, and I have a constituent question that I promised I would ask. And that is how is an arborist not seasonal work? And why are we paying $155,000 for non-seasonal work?
Great question. We do the vast majority of our pruning during winter time. And again, removals happen during summertime, but our prunings take care of, um, almost entirely in the winter time. In that chart up there on the screen, you know, 2022 and 2023 and 2024, that vastly increase in storm work. Last year, as basically what we did was storm work. We couldn't get to almost anything else. So again, that's where that, that time goes.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Thank you. Uh, just a two-part question. The, I don't remember the exact number. It was 153,000. Does that just cover, that covers his benefits and his wage? Are two people, is it one or two people we're looking at?
So that's for wages and benefits for the employees, yes.
For each one? And you want to hire how many?
It's two employees. I don't remember exact numbers. It's for one in 2027.
Okay. And then do you have the support for them in the field, meaning equipment, all that? Is there going to be other additional costs to put them in the field or do you have everything you need?
We've got everything we need. So when you start, sort of like you had a six-person staff, you know, inevitably you're going to have one or two people gone for whatever reasons, whether it's, there could be injuries, vacations, sicknesses, et cetera. So when you start running a staff that's, you know, five people or four people, there's equipment that is available. At least you team up then with that other person, bringing them back into the fold using the same equipment.
Can we make sure we hired healthy people that want to work then?
We do, we do.
Good.
I have a, a constituent question as well, and it has to do with kind of the philosophy of, uh, the forestry and arborists. When it comes to removing a tree or saving a tree, are there priorities given to trees that may be long-lived here in Rochester? For example, like a 100-year-old oak?
Yes, in fact, there's a whole list of criteria that we look at from a, a, a tree, keeping a tree or not keeping a tree. You know, health of the tree is first thing. There's trees that are less, um, structurally sound than other trees. There's trees that are more long-lived that like what we call legacy trees that we want to preserve as much as possible. So yeah, all those factors come into play when we start saying, yes, we want to remove a tree. Um, our friends at Public Works, they've got a real tough challenge when they do a street project. They go through some of these old neighborhoods and they, they bring ours in, our team members in and say, okay, how can we try to save these trees, especially these legacy trees? So we'll work together saying, okay, these trees are valuable, these trees are, are, are less valuable. And trying to preserve those legacy trees are really important for us anyways, and they, they appreciate that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Nigbor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our, uh, budget follow-up for maintenance service center facility and BRT structure maintenance. Who's got this one?
Mr. Wood is coming forward.
Good evening, Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, Administrator Zels. Zach Wood of Facilities here to review our, uh, maintenance staffing request for the new maintenance, uh, center facility and the BRT vertical operations. So with the new maintenance center coming in 2026, we are replacing two existing facilities. There is the Parks Maintenance Facility, which is currently not maintained by the Joint Facilities Department and the Traffic Operations Building, which is currently maintained by the Facilities Department. So we're going to be adding about 90,000 square feet to our maintenance team's managed space. On top of that, the new maintenance center facility is significantly more complex than the facilities that is replacing. So we're adding, um, geothermal heat pump systems, um, significant, uh, high-performance building automation systems, lighting control, gas monitoring, emergency backup systems. And all those systems require significant more, significantly more maintenance than our existing systems in these facilities have. On top of that, when the BRT system goes online in 2027, all of the assets being maintained are going to be distributed over that 2.8 mile route. So our maintenance team, if they're going to have to pull these assets into their existing workload, are going to have to significantly reduce the service level that we're delivering now to our facilities. Or we're going to have to look at significantly increasing contracted services budgets to offset the work that will be happening as we take on these new assets. Based on best practices and their past practices, sorry, we looked at some of the prior service contracts at fire stations before joint facilities became in service in the city. And we were doing some of these contracted maintenance services at those facilities. Based on those costs and the size of the facilities, we would expect contracted maintenance services to exceed the FTE budget that we're proposing. On top of that, we wouldn't have any response from our staff for emergent issues as they arise. Um, the next portion is we kind of looked at industry standard staffing levels for facilities. So we currently have three maintenance FTEs for joint facilities serving with these facilities, a little over 1 million square feet. So looking at the International Facility Management Association's 2022 report, for that square footage, the average staffing is about 5.5 FTEs for about 221,000 square foot per FTE. With our current level, we're sitting at about 337,000 square feet per FTE. And that doesn't quite equate to the actual square footage our staff are maintaining. For example, the Transportation Center, former PWTOC, is larger than that square footage for that facility alone. And just to make sure we have all of our essential assets maintained, we kind of divide up fire stations with City Hall. Uh, library maintains some of our downtown assets to ensure we have coverage for all of our critical buildings as issues may come up with those assets. So with that, we're about 2.5 FTEs short of kind of the industry standards. So we're kind of proposing bringing that up to four FTEs to get a little more equitable, um, workload for our staff and ensure we have the staffing availability to properly maintain these assets and respond to emergent issues as they arise. And with that, I can take any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Wood here? Uh, Councilmember Palmer.
So one of the things that you're talking about is geothermal. We have geothermal downtown, we have geothermal at the, at the new facility. It's all done by computers. So, so you don't have a person standing there looking at it all day long.
Yeah. So it's not just watching the system operate. We have building automation that monitors that and alerts us to issues that arise. It's the maintenance of the equipment. It's doing the daily checks to make sure that everything is running properly, checking equipment, pumps, fans, air handlers, reviewing that building automation. Because as we see these higher performance sequences coming in, there's a lot more potential for things to get out of whack and our energy use to start crawling up. So there's a lot of logic that happens in there that our staff monitor to see if temperatures are running within set points, we have alarms where if our heating and cooling systems, for example, get more than two degrees away from set point, they start alerting our staff so they can go see what the issue is. So we are getting ahead of issues with our energy use.
Okay. And then you, you have listed here the BRT. The BRT, isn't that a separate funding source and, and then being paid completely different?
Yes. So once the BRT comes in line, currently in 2026, this position is proposed to be fully levy funded. When BRT comes online, we estimate about 25% at minimum of this position will be charged to BRT and not be on the tax levy at that point.
So the, the park maintenance building, for lack of a better way of calling it, when is that going to be completed?
Uh, summer 2026.
So you, you don't need them for the whole year. It's a brand new building, which I know is going to take some time. But, but can't you just hire somebody for that last half of the year, um, when the building's built?
That is an option. There is some benefit to getting staffing onboard early during construction to get them familiar with systems, work with contractors. But yes, that's definitely an option, bring them on later in the year.
And if I may, I would just point out if the desire would be to bring them on later in the year and lower your baseline tax levy, it just increases the amount of tax levy that you would have in 2027. So not that you can't do that, but at the end of the day, the same amount of baseline tax levy would be extended. Except that when the BRT comes online, then they would absorb their portion of the cost.
And how did you come up with 25% for the BRT?
We just looked at the number of assets and kind of estimated how much time would be required each month for preventive maintenance. And then an estimate based on the number of assets and size of the facilities, how much, um, on-demand work orders we would see based on our other buildings.
But is, is your international, your, your, your numbers, are they done on square foot? Is that what I, I heard?
So it's a mix. So the square footage is done, um, for the FTE projection by the IFMA guidelines there. That's based on square footage. When we looked at the time for BRT, we were looking at our work order system because we have a lot of the similar assets right now. We have snow melt, heating systems, cooling systems, ventilation, all of that. So we just kind of looked at what those require for maintenance and estimated how much time will be required of staff.
Well, when we've done tour of the Public Works building, it's just a big garage. I mean, it's a cement floor, some, some, I mean, there's not a lot of.
It is a big garage, but it is, there are significant uses going on out there that do a lot, that have a lot of taxing wear on our equipment. So that is actually our most utilized FTE right now is our PWTOC. You know, those plows are going in and out every day. We have to deal with, you know, 40 garage doors. We have heat pumps, heating and cooling, the whole building that need maintenance, um, emergency backup systems. And you know, it's 340,000 square feet, you know, throughout any given day, there's things going wrong in the building that require our maintenance staff's attention.
One, one last question. So I'm assuming if, if Public Works used to do this and now these guys are doing it, that we just swapped the budget. Am I wrong in that?
This is an addition. They, parts of Public Works' job was to do jobs that are probably not the best utilization of their skillset. We have been centralizing facilities. I would say part of my job was to take my trash out. I'm not sure that that's a dollar amount, hourly dollar amount that you would want to pay. So I still take my trash out, but I do that at seven o'clock at night. But there's, we're trying to optimize the people that we have. And when they're out in the plows, we need all of the public works operators to be out in the plow and the sand trucks. They are not available to maintain the building when the alarm is going off, when we have a storm event, uh, whether that's a winter storm or a summer storm. Those are things that just don't get done.
Some of the things in here are just things we do operationally. Some of the things that are mandated, you know, by law, and some of the things are very proactive, you know, types of, of things that we also do. But again, snapshot in time. No.
Slide a hand.
Slide a hand. Uh, but, but that was, I'm not going to go through all those, but again, an effort to address a similar conversation. More recently, you've been engaged in, you know, our action plan, which is really sort of the roadmap for how we're going to try to live out the environmental stewardship. Strategic priority now that you, uh, have adopted. You'll actually see the action plan at your next council meeting. So that's, you know, yet to be ratified. So I just want to acknowledge that. As we walk through this, you still have opportunity to weigh in on that. Um, these are the different goals, uh, to achieve uh, and live out that strategic priority within this two to four year period of time. Um, and again, not going to go through all these. You've spent some time already at a study session doing that, but you know, if we talk about, you know, how we're living that out and the environmental stewardship space specifically now, uh, active transportation, you know, we're hiring a boat, uh, court shift coordinator that's really designed to think about alternative means of transportation. The county is starting up with their trail planning in 2026. We want to be actively engaged in shaping, you know, what that means for active transportation and recreation and in Rochester. And so, you know, we don't do all these things, but we want to be engaged. And you very distinctly said, you want this to be a community priority and an organizational priority. So we're always trying to live in, uh, both of those, uh, spaces. We are going to talk later about city fleet electrification. We mentioned that earlier when that, that question came up. Um, there's a lot of just money questions in there. I mean, that's at the end of the day, um, we'll talk more about that at the next meeting. Uh, you're talking about transportation electrification, the community. How do we have community level charging? The team has brought you that information in the past and you're working on finalizing policy in that space. So again, not a budget item, but a policy item. And you can influence a lot in this space through smart, uh, policy and smart land use policy. You have your comp plan update, uh, also on next month's agenda. So also be thinking about that. Building energy, another way to make progress in this space. I would say this is like the signature anchor initiative though. Um, and how we're going to accomplish and make progress on greenhouse gas emissions. So RPU and they are on your agenda later in September. Is going to be talking to you about the 6% rate increase to get you to 2030. Um, with, you know, renewable energy by that point. And there's also that discussion about, you know, might it be a little bit later than that, uh, with a different rate trajectory? They're doing surveying around that and doing excellent work there. Uh, but at the end of the day, if you move forward with that 6% rate increase over a number of years, um, you're lowering your, uh, greenhouse gas emissions related to electricity by 70 to 90%. So major investment, major accomplishment, well ahead of many other communities in that space. And so if someone asks you how you're living out your environmental stewardship priority, this is maybe the first thing I would talk about. Um, also, uh, the RPU, uh, team has invested 34 million in advanced metering. That's an active live project right now. To help people at the individual and at the organizational level, uh, manage their own energy use and, you know, provide more active management of that through metering. Uh, we're continuing on with some of the legislative requirements around commercial benchmarking at 50,000 square feet or more. Uh, we have funding from the state to extend a limited term, uh, position in that space. Um, but again, trying to get, you know, more people thinking about, well, how can I manage my energy well in the building? Ties back to what Zach, you know, was just talking to you about also. Uh, then lastly, again, this is sort of like some of the things we do in the framework that we, you know, already operate in, but beneficial electrification as well as, uh, energy efficiency investment that RPU makes up to 3.2 million dollars a year. So just, uh, looking at how that also weighs in, uh, to things you talked, just talked about Arboris. I won't belabor that point, but we believe that reflects your environmental stewardship priority as well. And then we're going to, uh, transition. You put it in your work plan to talk about the natural gas front, uh, natural gas franchise fee. We'll talk about that momentarily. Um, and the, uh, the sustainability team has really done a lot of great work and sort of prepping, uh, that. So before we transition into a bit of a deeper dive on natural gas franchise fees, are there any thoughts or questions or reflections on how we're walking in the action plan space?
Uh, Councilmember Miller.
Yeah. Thank you for, for writing some of these. I, I know I asked for a lot of these updates at the last meeting. Um, but I, I guess one overarching comment is one, two things I don't necessarily see, uh, thinking about this, but have been adopted are the energy action plan and the sustainability, resiliency, community work plan. So how much, how does that inform some of these actions? What's driven from those adopted documents into this versus our discussion in the strategic priority setting?
Yeah, I think that's a.
How do they interact?
Yeah, Your Honor, I think that's a great plan. So, and, and this is a great plan, a great question. Um, but it does really get into sort of this layering of plans, right? We have a lot of things that flow in from, you know, getting us to the point of, of the action plan. So you've got the comp plan. You've got the mayor's work, the, for the 2050 work. You've got the sustainability resilience to plan, the energy action plan. You know, we're trying to take pieces of all that and say, what can we do right now to make those happen? So met it in a short level. I think that's really how we, how we look at it.
And I appreciate that. And I also want to just highlight like this 2023 overview of environment economy, social equity. Like we're, we see that in December 23 and we see it today and it's, I, I just don't see an opportunity where we're really tracking these. Like again, the sustainability and, uh, the energy action plan has goals. You work plan has some goals and I just don't see like the reporting of how we're tracking that over time. And to the point about RPU and I'll talk about this too, but like, how are we talking to the community about that? That carbon intensity reduction. I know like Excel has some, some interesting dashboards about their grid carbon intensity, but like, I, I just wonder how communication gets built into this and how we track this over time and measure that progress towards the goal versus hey, in 2025 or the 26 and 27 budget years, environmental responsibility is now a priority of the council, but like it's also been adopted in ways in the past by prior councils.
Yeah, Your Honor, I, I really think that, um, when you see the, uh, action plan come forward to you next week, uh, one of the things is how do we measure progress toward these goals? And you know, I think we're going to definitely have some, you know, dashboarding that happens with this. I mean, clearly in this area, it's, you know, what is happening with greenhouse gas emissions and how are we measuring that? And so to keep that more front forward, I mean, these, it's great to say like, do we accomplish what we talked about in 2023? I don't think that was really the intent of that exercise. It was like snapshot in time. What are we doing here? Um, but over time it really is like, what's happening with that? And so each of these key goal areas has an indicator that we're trying to walk with. Same with housing, same with, you know, all the other strategic priorities that we have as well.
I appreciate that. And final comment on this, and I know this was a comment that I made at the last study session as well. But looking at this, at like even in the 2023 document, I mean, stormwater management, whether that was a priority or not, we would be doing stormwater management. And understanding what's like a city service versus a responsibility that we have to our community and to planning, uh, sustainability and our environmental approach. I think there's a nuanced difference there. And I know that quality services we remove from the council priorities. So maybe that just makes it harder to neatly fit things into buckets. But I, I just look at the services that any city is providing. And then what are we doing based on the conversations that we had earlier this year? And like, how do we just create a little bit of separation there and what we would do anyway versus what, how this process is interacting?
If I may, I would just maybe push back a little, not any services providing the level of stormwater management that we're providing the level of treatment of wastewater, the level of energy reduction in our wastewater treatment processes, the level of energy reduction in RPU's ability to provide energy to the community. So I, I don't know that we can measure ourselves against most communities. Um, and so the amount of dollars that we're putting into stormwater management in order to be able to offset the impacts on the environment, which is a big part of stormwater management, is not insignificant when you look at both the capital and the operating model, and they're also layered together in such a way where we don't just have a stormwater management team, a wastewater management team, a streets management team, a parks management team, they all come together to provide those services. So it does become challenging to report it in buckets because it's not how city work gets done. When somebody has a spill or reports something on a street, that's the inspection that happens is often a wastewater operator. The street sweeping that happens is often in the streets department. And some of the support that happens on a major scale is coming from directly from stormwater fees. So we, if we were going to put them all in buckets and show them, it would be very difficult to keep your budget in a reasonable level and to operate in an efficient way. I think we can show some of them to deputy, um, deputy city administrator Parrish's point in your strategic plan, action plan. I'm not sure they're all going to be measurable from a dollar and cents perspective or bucketable that way, unless, um, well, it would, we would have to really change our budget.
No, and I don't want us to re, re do our budget process. I, I just again, want, want to make sure that we're tracking and communicating what we're doing because of some of these council priority resetting conversations we have and and also just generally when plans get adopted that have contemplated metrics that are being tracked, like how are we making sure that we are tracking those and reporting back to both the council and to the community. Um, and, and I appreciate the, the level of service that we provide in stormwater and absolutely that's it part of our environmental responsibility. But just want to make sure that we're clear in the, the services and where the, the city service is expected versus what we're doing in addition to on some of these things, I think is, and, and again, not to track in dollars and cents, but
I guess that's also just maybe a conversation that we continue to have with the city council because I, I'm hearing an art to the science. And I think it's in the eye of the beholder, how someone would necessarily track what is a baseline requirement for any city versus additional support for any of the different services that we provide. If you asked a, somebody in parks, they would say they could never have enough forestry people. So their baseline is real different than somebody else. So I appreciate the comment and I think that some of that is, requires more dialogue to understand what counts and what is the majority that counts as a baseline versus additional.
And, and it probably goes into my question, which I am looking forward to the future analysis of the, the city cost of services and how we factor that into the development patterns and some of that analysis of per revenue or per part, per acre property tax and, and cost of service allocated over the city. So I appreciate the discussion, look forward to more, but just want to make those comments.
Councilmember Keen.
Yeah. Again, I appreciate, again, what you tried to show is by 2023, just this long thing. Cause I think part of the concern I have with this discussion is that umbrella of sustainability and how big it can be. I could almost cringe a little bit seeing our first two goals are greenhouse gas oriented, but I think those are some of the big things we're working on. I, I also take issue with this council member Miller's view of like, if you have to do these services, you shouldn't take credit for them because you must do them. And the fact is we're doing them differently because of some of these values we have, and I think we should be leading with those. Um, I, you, you've talked of things that we point out some things that aren't there, but, um, this, the work that's starting up now about water and long-term sustainability for water. These are really important things going on and we're doing them different than other people are doing them. Um, I, I've had people call and their biggest sustainability issue is litter and plastic bags and things like that. And we're not doing much with that, but we have a little bit better and we have these things that we're doing in the community. So I want to say we must continue to talk about sustainability as a bigger issue and not just a, a department that's doing four things. Um, so I, so I, I'm kind of counterbalancing there. There'll always be things like rebate assistance that we just aren't getting to or aren't successful with, or you know, the, the electric fleet getting built up really quick. I, I don't think we should let those things to get us to the point of saying we're failing in the sustainability. The sustainability goal, again, it is one of these things too, that's in conflict in many cases with, um, affordable living and things like that. And we have to work through some of those things. And my take is the city of Rochester is doing that responsibly.
Other comments? I'll, I'll just weigh in. I, I agree with the approach that, uh, both council member, uh, Miller and, uh, Keen suggested. I think what uh, what I'm hearing at, from council member Miller is that we need, we'd like to see where, as I mentioned earlier, where the seeds are happening that are moving the, uh, the, uh, priority or the strategic priorities. Uh, namely here, uh, sustainability and whether that's a budget issue or if it's the objectives of the FTEs, are they moving their, their job focus? Uh, and also I think kind of to pull in what council member Keen said and, and, uh, what I heard in that is that that there is a lot going on and, uh, and I think that from a, from an, uh, overall standpoint as a council, what I want to see is kind of where is this culture change happening? That people, everybody, whether they work at RPU or public works or community development or, uh, in finance that they're thinking. how can I do things better that, that are either focusing on sustainability and kind of that future look and, and making Rochester a thriving city for the future when it comes to sustainable environment. So that's kind of my way of kind of pulling that together. But thank you, Mr. Parrish and I is.
Mr. Parrish is continuing.
Mr. Parrish is continuing.
All right, your honor, thank you. So just a little table setting for this. I'm going to present this, but I want to also acknowledge Mr. Luckstein and Kayla. They've done a lot of work in this, a lot of work in this space. And they're certainly here to also, you know, offer any perspective and questions that you might answer any questions that you might have. A little table setting for this. We've talked about natural gas franchise fees a handful of times over the last few years. Most recently, in the context of how are we going to fund and invest in streets? It was sort of as we were contemplating sales tax and we pursued the sales tax, you know, the street funding. You know, we're looking at like, what if we don't receive that? And what are alternatives in the future to invest in streets? I'm sure, you know, our public works director would say we still have a long way to go in streets. And I think, you know, there's still a lot of unmet need. We still have a lot of unmet in facilities. We have a lot of unmet needs and liabilities throughout the city. So we just all acknowledge that. So I'm going to try to present this in sort of an objective way here and just acquaint you with the conversation. What are franchise fees in general? For those that haven't been acquainted with this, it really is a charge for the utilization of our right of way in general. Private entities are making profit over the use of our right of way. You might not be surprised if we go and ask to use private property, we generally pay for it. And quite handsomely to add that. But really it's that. And then just the ongoing management of all the work. There's some privileges extended to folks that have a franchise agreement where they have access to manage their asset in our right of way in different ways than others. So just thinking about it ultimately that way. There's a lot of different ways to think about it. I would just say natural gas really is the outlier here. We have what in essence is a franchise fee for almost all other, we'll say utilities in the city. And so you think about stormwater, wastewater, water, electric, parking. They are all paying you pilot, which is in essence, the government way to say franchise fee. And so they're paying for the use of right of way to deliver something that, you know, it could either be publicly or privately delivered for some economic benefit. Right now, all the proceeds of those funds generally hit the general fund and you've seen that in your budget presentation. It's there generally realized as a revenue to the general fund at this point in time. They're not dedicated to something specifically. Options, if we were to look at options for a natural gas franchise fee, how might we do that? And I would just want to set the table on this a little bit. We're giving you the baseline information here. The intent, if you were interested in pursuing this would be to have a more robust engagement process. Talk things through. The business community will have feedback for you on this. Residents will have feedback to point earlier from council member Keen. You know, you have to balance affordable living and other values with these types of fees. These are fees generated off of heating in large part. And so some people don't, you don't get to decide, you know, whether you want to heat your home in the winter. It's part of, you know, what's important, obviously for just general living and quality of life. Three kind of ways to look at how you could do a fee like this. One is a flat monthly fee. So you just say you have a meter, a natural gas meter, you pay. We ran some scenarios. One version of this would say you could generate $1 million. It's pretty easy to explain, you know, you $2 for a residential account, $5 for a large commercial account. I would also say however you do these, you know, we have entities, we pay natural gas as a city. RPU is a fairly substantial wholesale natural gas purchaser. So things might work their way into rates otherwise. So you have to also recognize the way we do this impacts other parts of the, of budgets that you all are responsible for. But it is very simple to talk about like, you know, everybody pays two bucks. It's very easy to convey. You can navigate your revenue here by increasing the amount. So maybe large commercial users at five bucks a month is too low, you know, Mayo Clinic would pay five bucks. Some other large user would pay five bucks. So these are, you could generate more revenue by having more of a conversation about your rate structure here. Per therm, this is really just saying like, you pay based on your consumption. Terms are just how you measure natural gas. In this case, if you went with a 0.015 per therm, you could generate 1.52 million. Again, you could charge more per therm, generate more revenue. The one good part of this is it does tie it to energy consumption, right? So if you decide to use more natural gas, you pay for more for natural gas. So the idea is like, you know, water rates where you're paying more for summer watering, you wanted to discourage that. So you pay higher. With that being said, some of our folks that live in more modest homes don't have the weatherization to the homes. They might be paying more or have more utilization, more terms. Because, you know, their, their homes aren't as energy tight and is efficient. Another option.
Can you hold there, Mr. Parrish? Councilmember Miller?
And you're probably getting to this, but often these funds are used by cities to fund exactly the programs that help those customers who have poor weatherization, fund the improvements that reduce their energy costs. So again, thinking about affordable living and how these things interact, it is a broader system than gas use is fixed. You got to heat your home, you got a leaky old home, but exactly this point is often contemplated. How do you fund these programs? So just to bring in the intersection of these.
Yeah, we are absolutely going to get to that. So. And then lastly, you can just say, much like we do for our city entities or some variation, again, there's a lot of different, you know, ways in which we charge our folks for pilot and franchise fee. But you could just say it's a straight percent of revenue, a very normal thing to do out in the marketplace. Merk is not particularly a fan of this, but if you did it 5% of revenue, which would be in the low side of what our city folks are paying, you could generate 2.4 million for that. The natural gas provider, will that their folks know that this is a charge by the city on the bill? Like this is, you know, there's not like this isn't blend into the bill like they, you know, call it out and let people know that this is being charged that way. So again, some pros and cons, I kind of went through some of these, so I won't be repetitive, but some of the pros and cons are articulated more specifically there on the flat fee model. And, you know, I, again, I'm not going to read these to you, but I think I covered them generally when we just talked a moment ago. Same, same thing for the, you know, per therm model with no inflation. And then again, you can start, you know, and graduate yourself into a per therm model. So here you could just project some escalation as you move along. Therm usage, again, your goal for therm usage would that be going down, but that's not exactly what's happening right now. So much like our charter revenue or our spectrum revenue, it's a declining enterprise every quarter, it's less. You know, in some regards, if your policy objective is to reduce the use of natural gas, like that would be, you'd be accomplishing your mission there. And then percentage of utility revenue, again, the revenue can go up and down. So there would maybe be some potential for variability there. And it doesn't necessarily tie as strongly to some of the other conservation focused goals. But generally, utility revenues go up. And so I would say generally you could expect your pilot or your franchise fee to go up here in that model. Now, this is, I think, to getting to the point that was talked about before. If you do such a thing, how, how might you invest the funds to the betterment of the community? And so here are your options. And again, there's other here. So if you have other ideas, here's the opportunity to do that. Again, just add it to the general revenues of the city. In essence, you could lower your property tax levy. That's in, that's generally what's happening with your other franchises right now. You could direct it to some other need of the city. I put a couple in there because you've had conversations about those, but it could be anything, could be parks, could be anything else that accomplishes any other strategic priority that you have. We'll spend more time now, though, talking about investing it in your environmental steward strategic priority. Because again, natural gas does have that linkage to, you know, fossil fuel utilization. How are we going to encourage people to rethink their use of natural gas? And so we'll spend some time talking about how it could be used in this context. Working idea is that you'd have two buckets of investment. One is at the community level. I think there's a notion here that it'd be proposal focused. We would work with partners. You'd have whatever ultimate revenue you have here and invest that. I think we would, you know, talk about like, you know, we have some overhead with how this would work and could this be, you know, would you take 10% to invest it in our overhead and and management of these programs and the infrastructure needed to get the money, you know, out to where it's going to be most beneficial. But councilman Miller's point earlier, this is about weatherization. You could target that to, you know, in, you know, lower income levels, focus on energy efficiency, weatherization, getting people to beneficial electrification for vehicles, et cetera, and appliances. Thermal energy network pilots, you know, with some of the tax credit environment change. You know, there's still opportunity there. It's not totally closed off, but like, you know, does require investment to, you know, get those things to work. Organizationally, again, you talked earlier, you know, how could we do better with EV fleet? And I'll just say, I get to work on the fleet allocations, which is maybe not the most fun thing I do all year. Because it can be disappointing to folks at times, but you know, we haven't been, with the funding we have available, we haven't been able to make that next step in the EV space because we just, we're so far behind. And to administrator's Elms point earlier, the cost escalation is so significant. We just haven't been saving enough to replace what we have. So we just haven't been putting enough money aside. So we've had to recalibrate that. Green infrastructure projects, tree planting, active transportation investment. These are all things that could be invested in. So again, a recommendation on how this could happen. I think there's a general orientation toward per therm for all the reasons that were mentioned. But it might be a hard start, right? Hard to explain, hard to socialize. So I think looking at it and saying, we'll start off with year one to three with a flat monthly fee just to get it onboarded, get revenue sort of stabilized and then transitioning to per therm after you've had a little bit more time to socialize it and think it through. Gives people time to, I think this is a really key point that the team came up with. It gives people time to think about what's my energy utilization? Like, what can I do differently? So it gives people some time that, to the point, you're seeing a number of folks now enact natural gas franchise fees that are very targeted like this. So from a city best practice perspective, you're seeing more of that happening, particularly in the Twin Cities area. And then again, it ultimately gets you to that conservation mindset and linking it to greenhouse gas emissions overall. So we're saying half the money goes to community, competitive community generated projects, half for organizationally focused environmental stewardship priorities. And then really just kind of thinking about what does the strategy look like for, you know, what people would find to be meaningful for the investment of these funds with, you know, if this is something you're interested in entertaining. Of course, not doing anything is always an option too. I didn't put that up there, but it, you know, it is always an option. But before we go out and engage around something, we want to have some perspective from the council that there's license to want to work in, in this space. So with that, I think we're all happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. While I think this can be a valuable discussion, I don't think this is the time. If I thought that this were actually a franchise fee and a franchisee was actually paying a fee out of their earnings, I might be for this. But the fact that it's a tax and a regressive tax at that on each homeowner and business owner in the city at a time in which we're saying, you know, we'll add 6% or 4% to your electric, only an average of $10 a month. We'll add 2% on water. Those things just add up. And so this would be a hard no for me at this time. I can see the benefits. Just, I just don't think that we need to levy another tax on the citizens of Rochester right now.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, I'm in favor of it and there are a few reasons for it. I think to take the dollars and take it off our property tax, I think is the number one issue for me. It could reduce people's property tax, which I think is a good thing. I think the per therm way of doing it is the best way to do it because it makes you want to reduce your, your energy bill and allows you to do that. And, and, and Mr. Wall's 100% correct. It's a pass along. You know, as Mr. Parrish said, it's going to say gas franchise fee right there from Rochester. But I think you said it's going to go to your property tax. The nice thing about it is that it exposed all over every, everybody who uses gas in Rochester pays it. Not everybody in Rochester pays property tax. The other thing I'd like to see us do, and I think you could do it pretty easily is I don't see putting in an RPU and having that exemption for them. So you're not double whacking our homeowners with that. So that, that's where I come from. I think it's a good way of reducing your budget. It's a good thing to incentivize people, incentivize people to be energy efficient and save it, save money.
Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate the presentation because I think this is a key area of how we do the longer term planning, particularly for how we help people reduce that cost ultimately, because I think to the, the point that council member Wall is making, I completely agree. Like there are rising energy costs, there are rising costs all over the place. And I would just point out, Excel Energy had a full page ad as required in the post bullets in this weekend, advertising that for 2025, they are proposing to the Public Utility Commission nearly a 10% rate increase this year and then another 4% increase next year. So energy costs are going up, there are federal changes, and I think to the extent that we can help people reduce that energy cost for the long term, whether they're heating home, a home, gas, electricity, some combination thereof. We're helping people reduce that energy burden. I think that's in alignment with our strategic priorities to reduce greenhouse gases, but also understanding that affordable living. How we're helping people get to a better place, a more sustainable place, both financially and from an environmental perspective. So I think that to the mayor's point about council salaries, like we can keep pushing this off and the problem doesn't go away. Mr. Nigbor earlier said, we're seeing the effects of climate change over and over and over. And so we could say, yeah, you know, like, let's not push this into the, the near term. But we cannot avoid these rising costs in the long term. And I think that many cities are showing this is a best practice and I really look forward to further discussion on this. And I think it's, it's an issue that we have to take up. And so I appreciate Mr. Palmer's perspective too. I wouldn't necessarily look forward to it offsetting property tax levy directly. I would look for it funding those programs that make it not a regressive tax. It'll help people reduce their cost.
Councilmember Keen. Yeah, just one question in my comments. When you have a franchise or franchise fee like MetroNet or somebody else does, is there any access they get cheaper or easier to the right of way because they're a franchise? Or is it the same cost whether they're a franchise or not?
I believe that's the case, but I'm going to defer to Tyler.
Yeah, when we're talking about general costs, typically if they have a franchise agreement, their access to the right of way specifically is not charged, right? They're, they go into public spaces or they go into existing public utility easements. However, they are charged for the permit fees and, and items like that to to review their routes and as part of their submittals.
Yeah, I guess here's where I'm at with this right now. I generally would not like to do something like this because I do consider it regressive. But I'm trying to, I'm open to it for a couple, for a couple of reasons. One is to find a, a funding source to be able to do some of these environmental initiatives that we want to do without having that go on to the, on to the levy. And I do like the idea that since it is contributing to greenhouse gases and we do it through terms, I think it would be defendable as a franchise fee that's funding environmental stewardship. But, but I think the devil's in the details. If we're going to, you know, have them collect this money for us, but we're going to then get less funding for work in our right of way and we're going to have a bigger expense in RPU, I don't think we did ourselves any favors. So I think there, there's a lot of details to work out. So I am open to this, but at a fairly minimum thing. This is like, we're looking at this as like a one, 1.5 million right now, but as it grows. And I think this is, there's probably 40,000, this mirrors our water meters pretty, pretty clearly. So so again, I'm trying to be open to it, but I, you know, I'm not there depending on the details.
Councilmember Wall.
Yeah, right. So I was talking about it.
I was looking this way to see if there were others.
I was like.
I thought he was looking that way too. I think councilmember Palmer is living in hope as regards the levy. And I think that Keen and Miller have more accurately said, this is likely to fund things that we aren't currently doing. So I would not go, I don't believe, I don't believe it would
I don't believe it would reduce our levy in any way. Again, I think it's a valuable discussion. I think we're already, as a community and as taxpayers, investing heavily in clean energy over the next many years with the increases that are already proposed for for our utility bills.
Councilmember Frederick.
I definitely believe in being environmentally responsible. But I do know this about, I'm pretty sure vast majority of my constituents, they're not real comfortable saying, hey, we as a government entity or an entity are going to take your money and we're going to do what's best for you. They're just, they're not comfortable with that. They, if they want to make improvements to their house to save energy and such, they're going to do those things on their own. I'm not so sure they're going to file through all the programs and do all the stuff that you need to do to sign up for said program, this and that. I just, I just think it'll be sour grapes for people if you say, hey, we're going to take your money and do what's best for you. I just, I don't, I don't, I'm kind of on Wall's camp on this one.
Councilmember Dory.
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of pursuing the franchise fee for natural gas to incentivize combating climate change and 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 for funding more robust initiatives for environmental stewardship. So I would, I would be excited for further conversation. I think there are a great many details still to be, to be worked out. So I do have that same hesitation that Councilmember Keen has as we continue to to move forward. But I would encourage us as a group to continue to move forward and work out those details so that we can implement a franchise fee on natural gas.
Just to, so that we all have weighed in, I I also am very intrigued by the discussion and want to continue to the discussion. I am particularly interested in the community focused on the residential commercial new construction and really giving back. But we're, we're going to get with the franchise fee to to our residents and and property owners.
Yeah, I believe Administrator Zell. I'm going to go to Mayor Norton and then Administrator Zell.
Thank you. So a couple of things I would mention, I agree with what I think is the majority that this is interesting to look at, and I hope we can continue the discussion. For the eight years I've been on, this suggestion has come up time and time again as almost an unfairness in the community that there are folks that have access, as was described, and pay a franchise fee, and then there's this one that doesn't, and that there's an unfairness. And the idea has come forward for years that there are things we can use it for. And I think that's part of the important discussion that we do with what we do with that money. It's not just collecting money to collect money, it's collecting money to offset, you know, to deal with climate change and greenhouse gas emissions and to offset the costs on the on residents who are struggling as well. So I think that's a discussion we have to have moving forward, and I I hope we do. It sounds like maybe we have interest to do that. So I look forward to moving ahead with the discussion.
Administrator Zell.
Thank you, Council President. This might be repetitive based on what's been said, but I was a little concerned towards the beginning. This does, I don't think this would influence your 2026, 2020, maybe 2027, but just even the franchise fee implementation process outside of engagement and inside of statutory requirements. It's not a short process, so additional discussion important. I just want to make it clear that I don't think this will influence your 2026 budget, maybe 27. But even then, it could end up being something that ends up needing to be a budget amendment or something like that, depending on your public engagement and then just the franchise fee process that that is in place for the state.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Parish?
Yeah, I think we have some direction to bring forward a process to you to consider and how you might advance the conversation.
Great. Administrator Zell, what's up next?
We will just go back to the beginning, which is September 15th is your next study session. You will be in this room in some configuration. We will have a deeper dive into the electric vehicles and equipment revolving fund, whether that's EV charging, EV vehicles, and the equipment revolving fund, just information about how that's continued to evolve. The collaboration on how how we've been collaborating with Rochester Community and Technical College on facilities there, potential evolution. We have some discussion happening there, just understanding for the city council what you've inherited and what opportunities might exist. And then, as I mentioned, Rochester Public Utilities has some fee proposals that they want to bring forward that didn't make it into the discussion that we had in June for the fee schedule. And then although it says other, we will name it as public music. Just a little bit of discussion on what's currently in the budget, what some of their concerns are about being able to provide a robust fourth best, but opportunities to still, obviously, we are still providing fireworks. Make that very clear, fireworks is in the budget. Public works or a public music.
Patriotic music.
We've always had patriotic music. We don't always do only patriotic music. But did just want to point that out. And then your next, so you have your next study session on September 15th, and then your voting meeting on September 22nd is when you would need to establish your preliminary levy. And for those who aren't aware, the preliminary levy is the levy amount that you cannot go above anytime further. And so lots of great discussion today, helpful as we move through the 15th and into the 22nd. So if there's any final feedback, questions, discussion, happy to take that.
Mayor Norton.
September 22nd is my birthday, so I would like